The zoning board of appeals meeting for the city of Troy to order. And we do have a quorum, but we're going to go through the roll call here in a second and approve it. And so at this point in time, I'm going to call on Ms. Friends to, or is it Paul that does that?
I'll be doing it.
Okay, Ms. Friends.
Mr. Ready?
Yes, please.
Mr. Kenkri?
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Here.
Mr. McCauley?
Here.
Mr. Bosnbrook?
Here.
Mr. Keltounis? Mr. Keltounis, you're on mute. There you go.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
I'm here.
And Mr. Green?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have quorum. Okay, we have all seven members here. Mr. Kenkri, welcome. This is the newest alternate from city council to our board. And he will be sitting as a full voting board member here tonight. So welcome to your first meeting, sir. We like having a full board whenever possible. And at this point in time, we do have procedure to read that the vice chairman, Mr. Bosnbrook, will read, but in our packets, we have slightly revised rules and procedures. And I'd like Mr. Vice Chairman Bosnbrook to read that. And then we're going to entertain amongst members the possibility of adopting the change. I'm just going to let Mr. Evans address this because he and I spoke on the phone about this earlier today briefly. Mr. Evans?
Right. So at the last meeting, the board asked me to modify the procedure that we read to more closely reflect our electronic meetings process. As everybody's aware, that was designed for in-person meetings. And when it was read, the prior version did get a little confusing because we have different ways we run the meeting now. So the revised version is included in your packet. And I think you're correct, Mr. Bosnbrook should read it. And if the board members are pleased with it, we should adopt it.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Vice Chairman Bosnbrook, do you want to grab that?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, can I ask, just to clarify, are we talking about the revised procedure? Or is it the new proposed resolution to do electronic meetings that we're going to entertain at this point?
Mr. Evans, can you address that? Mr. Evans?
Right now, what we're asking is for procedure. But Alan, if I could defer to you, certainly very soon in the meeting, we should also do the resolution that Mr. Bosnbrook is referring to, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, there's a revised procedure could be approved. We could do the resolution. It actually probably doesn't matter which order you proceeded. But the resolution is referencing the recent amendment to the Open Meetings Act that now allows this meeting to proceed remotely.
Okay, I'll start by reading the revised procedure statement, and then we can go from there.
Please.
Okay. So the zoning board of appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors, appointed by city council to decide on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. And this is the procedure. The board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the board to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Administration will present public comments to the board. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or postpone their request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes is needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision to Oakland County Circuit Court.
Thank you. So at this point in time, I can entertain a motion by a member of the board to approve that language that Vice Chairman Bosnbrook just read as our new set of rules and procedures for the board on any given meeting. Or at any given meeting, as a member of the board, want to be recognized. Mr. Green?
I will move that we accept the new language as read by Mr. Bosnbrook to replace the previous language.
There's a motion for approval of the language that was just read by Vice Chairman Bosnbrook. And Mr. McCauley seconds that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. I believe we're prepared for a vote, Ms. Friends.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Keltounis?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Bosnbrook?
Yes.
And Mr. Kenkri?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now I'm going to call on the Vice Chairman, Mr. Bosnbrook, to read the Electronic Open Meetings Act proposed language that would put us in compliance with state law as far as having these meetings electronically. Vice Chairman Bosnbrook?
Sure. So this is the proposed resolution to allow participation in public meetings by electronic means as allowed by Public Act 254 of 2020. Resolved that the Troy Zoning Board of Appeals hereby allows all members to participate in public meetings by electronic means as allowed by Public Act 254 of 2020, since an in-person meeting could detrimentally increase exposure of board members and the general public to COVID-19, and would also be difficult to facilitate in light of the recent Michigan Department of Health and Human Services epidemic orders protecting public health and safety. Members participating electronically will be considered present and in attendance at the meeting and may participate in the meeting as if physically present. However, members must avoid using email, texting, instant messaging, and other electronic forms of communication to make a decision or deliberate toward a decision. Resolved that the Troy Zoning Board of Appeals hereby establishes public participation rules to provide for two methods by which members of the public can be heard by others during eligible virtual meetings. Public comments can be submitted for the zoning board of appeals meeting by sending an email to zbapubliccomments@troymi.gov. Emails received prior to 3:00 PM on the day of the zoning board of appeals meeting will be read at the meeting and made part of the public record. Public comments can also be submitted by calling the voice, assuming the following phone number, and leaving a voicemail message, 248-524-3580. Recorded voicemail messages received prior to 3:00 PM on the day of the zoning board of appeals meeting will be played at the meeting in compliance with the rules of procedure. For emails and recorded messages received after the deadline, reasonable efforts will be made to read emails and play recorded messages during the meeting. Any written public comment received before 3:00 PM on the date of the meeting will be forwarded to the ZBA members in advance of the meeting.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Bosnbrook. Now at this point, we can entertain a motion by a member of the board to take that language that the vice chairman just read and put it before the board in the form of a resolution for approval if there is a member who's willing to make that motion. Mr. McCauley?
I make the motion that we passed the motion of, or the resolution of the motion to alter our procedures to allow electronic meetings as read by Mr. Bosnbrook.
Second.
A motion for approval, and was it Eisenbacher with the second? Sorry, Mr. Green, seconds that motion. Is there any discussion?
One second.
Mr. Keltounis?
Keltounis, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I seconded the motion.
Okay, it was already seconded. That's okay.
Okay.
Any other further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Friends. We are prepared for the vote.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Keltounis?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Bosnbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Kenkri?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That's approved. Mr. Evans, the next thing I'm seeing here are the templates for resolutions for approval and denial for variance requests. Should we take action potentially to approve those as the template? So therefore, a board member can reference in the future potentially an approval per the template or denial per the template? Or is this just for our information?
This is just a guide. Well, we do that for some of our other boards. It's specific to this board, and so we don't have to take any action on those.
Very good. Next thing, I believe, as I'm scrolling back up. Next thing is our approval of minutes, item number three from December 2020. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns by a member of the board related to what was presented in the minutes? Is there a member of the board who'd like to be recognized for a possible motion? Mr. Green?
I move that we approve the minutes from our previous meeting as printed.
Support.
Mr. Green and Eisenbacher, Mr. Green and Eisenbacher move and second a motion of approval of the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Friends. We are prepared for a vote.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Keltounis?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Bosnbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond? Oh, sorry, Mr. Kenkri?
I was not present at that meeting. So does that, am I supposed to abstain? Or do I still participate in the vote?
You can still participate.
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to item number four, approval of the agenda as presented. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns about what has been presented to the board at this time? If not, item number four will stand as approved administratively, and we could move on to hearing of cases. Mr. Evans, a quick question. Do we have knowledge that the petitioner? I don't see anyone on our screen other than city staff or board members, namely petitioners or the representatives. Did you know if we were, when you have somebody? Oh, I see someone's popping on right now.
Yes, that appeared.
Okay.
Yep, that looks like it's, we have.
A name that matches item number eight. Okay. Welcome, sir. We will call upon you here in a minute. This is item 5A related to a variance request to 4928 Park Manor. Mr. Evans, could you please present to the board the information that you have for us?
Yes, and I'll share some slides with the board on everybody's screen. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, good, good. All righty. So this is a variance request at 4928 Park Manor to allow a partially covered deck 10 feet from the rear property line, where the development approval requires the deck to be no less than 25 feet from the rear property. This is an aerial of the neighborhood, and that property is outlined in red. The neighborhood's south of Long Lake Road and west of Beach Road. And as indicated in the yellow overlay, all the property in this photo is zoned, single-family residential. I'll continue to zoom in closer on the neighborhood, finishing up with a close-up of the property. This was pre-development, by the way. This is a survey of the property with the road to the left. And I've outlined towards the back of the property the proposed location of the deck that was indicated on the plot plan provided by the applicant. Now, this is something that wasn't provided by the applicant, but it's a blow-up of the original development plan that was approved by the city. And what this reflects is the approved setback from unit boundaries. And as we can see, it's 25 feet. Back to the applicant's information, this is an overhead view of their proposal. And as indicated here, they're going to be 10 feet from the back property line. And they've also indicated in this illustration that they need to be back 10 feet from the property. So they're seeking a variance to be closer to the back property line than the development approval allows. So I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there a member of the board for, Mr. Evans or city staff on this issue?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Please proceed.
Mr. Evans, did we not hear a note petitioner back in either November and December, 4895 Park Manor with a similar request?
Yes.
All right. So we have the petitioner, or his or her representative in front of us. And, sir, will you identify yourself, please? You're muted. There you go. Okay. Please proceed. You're muted again. I don't know why.
I think he came off and then went back on.
Nothing. We can't hear you. Sorry.
He's plugging in his.
Nothing yet.
I believe you have to change your audio medium in the go-to meeting.
Mr. Green?
I actually have a question for Mr. Monstee. If, if a petitioner or anyone else is having technical difficulties during a meeting in these situations, allowing, pardon, is there room for allowing for typed communication in the group chat?
If the, if the board allows it, the board could allow that. I mean, technically, the board doesn't even have to hear a presentation from the applicant. But if the board would allow some sort of communication, that would be okay.
Is it any better now?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. So, yes. So thank you again for having me. My name is Amburch. Me and my wife own the property at 4928 Park Manor Drive. I did have some slides to share. If you guys can let me share my screen as well so I can walk through some of our pain points and reasoning for the various requests.
Do we want to make him a presenter?
Yeah.
One moment, please. Mr. Evans, just a quick question while we're waiting. So if a petitioner shares slides, how can we guarantee that goes into the public record? Is that something that you can grab now?
Well, the petitioner could forward that to us either at this time or make a point to email that information to me as soon as possible after their item is done, and we can make sure that gets the record. This meeting's also being recorded, so we have a way to compare that to what was presented tonight. We can always ask.
It is not. It is not. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, point of order, or at least information. The go-to meeting does not have the record icon on, so unless it is being recorded elsewhere.
It is being recorded elsewhere. Yeah, it's being broadcast, yep.
Okay.
And we can always send it as a decade, couple of talking points. So we can forward the presentation as well. No problem with that. So here's the letter.
I would just say, Mr. Evans, I would prefer that anything that's shared with the board, like, I mean, however the technology is that captures this and then can regurgitate it potentially in a court of law in the future is difficult for me to understand because I could barely even read it. I would prefer that our rule thumb would be if a petitioner wants to share it with us, it would have to be shared at that moment, immediately or before meeting. Like, if we were meeting in person at the city hall right now, we would know empirically it's in front of us, you know? It's a paper being held up or passed around, and then that can be captured by city staff. So I just feel a little uncomfortable when I don't know if this can or will be able to be captured. What if there's a technical snafu? That's, that's the other issue, you know, where you can't fall back on this. So that would be my preference. But you feel comfortable? Mr. Evans, you feel comfortable proceeding?
I do. If the rest of the board does, certainly. If the board's comfortable, one option we could do, we could entertain, is he could email it to me. And I would have, I think we should just go ahead and proceed. I mean, ultimately, I think if we can ask the applicant if he can provide us this information as soon as this item is done tonight, or at least by the beginning of the day tomorrow via email, he can send it to the planning department, and we can work with him to make sure that it does get into the record.
Is that agreeable, Mr. Matthew?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, like I said before, I've no issue sharing it. Nothing new in here. It's just some talking points for me to kind of just have a discussion going.
All right. Please proceed.
Okay. So this is the letter that I think went with our variance request. Again, just requesting the variance because just the way our property is set up, it's just 25 feet from the property line. So there's really no way for us to get out of our backyard or of our kitchen area. The way the elevation is the home, it's, it gives us an exit point from our kitchen. And the builder built like French doors that exit out, and it's seven feet off the ground. And I have some pictures that kind of show you specifically what that looks like. We do have, you know, young children at home. Plus, our in-laws stay with us as well. We're older. So we're trying to get safely, what do you do, to get out and get outside and get down. So we do, I want to get the deck built. And if I just go through some other elements of why this is important. The pictures will kind of reference, you know, the elevation, the clearance, and also the fact that our property, the way it's laid out in the subdivision, it faces towards the back of the, or it faces the common area, which kind of backs next to the beach road. So there's really nothing behind us for almost 350 feet all the way up to Beach Road. And again, I'll show you in the pictures and the aerial footage of the property now. Also, we bought the home, the builder or the city. Nobody mentioned to us that there's this restriction on building a deck, especially when we were sold this higher elevation, the lot size, paying extra money, a premium amount of money to get this lot just so that, you know, we could build that deck. And at no point did the builder tell us that, oh, you can't do that. And you have to go through a variance to get a deck built. Otherwise, you know, we would have considered other blocks that were, because you're one of the first four or five people that came and bought the bought the reservations on the lot to build the property. It would have easily taken one of the other properties that have just to walk out into a patio area. Uh, but we heard no indication that, no, you can't build a deck. You can go through a variance.
Just stop you real quickly. The board can't consider that. Whatever happened in your real estate transaction, what was presented via marketing, salesmanship, or whatever, cannot be considered by the board.
So just, I understand. I understand. I'm just saying, but the city approved the builders to build a home with this kind of elevations that do not allow for a deck to be built on. That's all my point was, right? Not saying that yet. Maybe stop out of the discussion here. But the city was aware that the builders are building homes maximizing the space where now, as a homeowner, I can't build out to get out of my house without having some kind of a deck for it. Um, and moving on, again, like I said, mentioned below, the way the home is laid out and the way it's built, we won't be obstructing any of our neighbors, both from a light perspective, because it's facing, my back of my house faces the east side. The sun coming up, the painting getting, is getting blocked by the other homes that are being built. The deck itself will not affect any of the other buildings around it. Uh, which goes to, you know, the statement of practical difficulty, the lot size, the way it was, the way the builder used it to build the home, maximizing the entire back of the home where I can't build anything out of it. So the smallness of the lot. Uh, and then again, the building of the deck is not impair lighting or accessibility to the common areas or put any of my neighbors behind. Uh, we did preach to all the neighbors, talk to them, and nobody had an issue with what we're requesting. Um, again, it's a backyard, so there's no driveway or city road access issues with it either. Going into some of the pictures, right? This kind of shows you the side view of the backyard, and then this how high uh, the exit point is from the kitchen going into the backyard. Uh, this view gives you the view of the house. So again, this height right here is about seven and a half, eight feet. So for me to get out and get into a patio, if you don't get allowed to build a deck, you're looking at 10 to 12 steps at a minimum uh, to get out of my, up my kitchen area down to a patio. Uh, again, having small kids and older parents living with us, it's not the most viable option for us. Uh, when looking at the view from inside of the home, looking outwards, you'll see the big common area, and then beyond that is retention pond, and then the beach road itself. So a lot of open area that we're not impeding into anybody else's area, zone, or accessibility to common areas, anything like that. Um, and again, just to amplify the point of how the home is built and where we are from a plot perspective, um, our house, this is the backyard, again, all wide open all the way back to here, right? The other homes getting built on the corner have no impact to the way our deck gets built out. Uh, and then the homeowners on either side, this one already is out there, and you know, we've got their okay. Uh, and then the other ones, we've got their okay from the builders themselves, and there was issues with us building the deck. And again, I don't know if any of our neighbors sent an email or a phone call or any kind of feedback on the request. Uh, but at least we're believing we've talked to all of them. Nobody is concerned with us pulling out the deck. Um, I think that's all I had to say. Again, I think it's very useful, again, from a property, I think it's somewhere in here from it will not diminish the property by any means. If you build out a deck, I think it's only going to add value to the home. Um, being the fact that our home is visible from beach road is going to amplify the property uh, from within the community itself. So people are going to like the layout rather than having just a staircase coming out going into a patio. Uh, but that's what I had to share, and I can send this PowerPoint out to the, to you guys at the end of the meeting.
Are there any questions of this petitioner by a member of the board? Mr. Green? No, I'm sorry. It's not Mr. Green. Who is this?
McCauley.
McCauley, sorry.
There you go. Um, I'm sorry.
I'm pointing hand over here on the other side of the screen, so that was somebody else. Well, okay.
Uh, to the petition, I apologize. Is it Sharma or Mathur?
It's Mathur, yeah.
Mathur, okay. Um, are you aware that, um, of the petition for 4895 that was heard in November or December at our zoning board of appeals meeting?
I know they did apply and then they were rejected, uh, but I don't know the specifics of it.
Okay.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, just before the board gets too far into discussion, it would be lawful, the city would allow the minimum-sized landing and stairs parallel and against the back of the house to allow safe ingress and egress. So the city would allow whatever uh, the building code allows let them enter and exit the back of their house. Just want everybody to know that.
Okay, Mr. Evans, can you, can we lose the, um, screen where the petitioner in large? There we go. I call it the Hollywood Squares.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm gaming myself. Um, okay, is there another member of the board for this petitioner?
Yes. Uh, I wanted to know is the only fire exit there is on the house beside the front?
I'm sorry. Repeat that again? I didn't get the question.
You know, every house, you gotta have two ways out in case of a fire. And this is the, the first, the front one, and then we've got to have one in the back. This is the only one.
So I mean, we have door and then the garage, but then this will be the only one to go out of the back.
Okay. And then another question I have, it's a cul-de-sac over there. It looks like it's going to be developed someday?
Um, yeah, there's, there are houses built all around. I think there's only a couple lots that are not built on right now. Uh, pretty much all the other homes have been either under construction or completely built.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Another member of the board? Okay, Mr. Mathur, am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, that's close.
Close enough. So at this point in time, uh, we are finished with you unless the member of the board wants to recall a conversation with you. So um, I, in this era of, uh, new, modern public meetings, we're limited by our technologies. So just be aware, uh, that um, if you were here in person with us, we'd ask you to sit back into the audience. But, um, you can't do that here, obviously. So that's just a fancy way of me saying, if, um, a member of the board wants to speak to you, they're going to speak to you and have to speak to you. But you are unmuted. I don't have the ability to, on this end, to mute you. Um, so, uh, just be aware of that. So if, like I said, if somebody needs to speak to you, we'll be doing that down the road here a little bit. Um, so now I would like to call on Ms. Friends. Um, if there are any, if you can just advise us as to public comments either before the 3:00 PM deadline today or certainly after as well. And I know that we all got our packets, but can you address any input from the public on this matter?
Yes. So for this project, we do have some emails. I'll read those.
Okay. Why don't I just do this? I'm going to open the public hearing because the members of the public can't address us except through those communications. Ms. Friends, we're going to have her read these into the public hearing at this point. So please proceed.
Um, this correspondence is from Tom and Wendy Boike, B-O-I-K-E. To the zoning board of appeals, we are Tom and Wendy Boike of 4895 Park Manor Drive. Troy and are part of the neighborhood of Nitu, Sharma, and Ambu. Matar, sorry if I mispronounced. Located at 4928 Park Manor Drive. We are in full support of their application for a partially covered deck and have no objections. Please grant their application. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact us. The next one is from, I'm just going to spell names, R-A-K-E-S-H, last name is P-A-T-N-A-I-K. Of 4887 Park Manor. Dear sir, I would like to support the appeal to allow a partially covered deck as made by the following applicant, 4928 Park Manor. I have no objections to this application and support the property owners. The next one is from Mirna Sultan, to whom it may concern. My husband, Michael Sultan and I, Mirna Sultan, are the neighbors of Nitu and Ambu. They live on 4903 Park Manor Drive. We support their zoning application and have absolutely no objection to their zoning application to build a deck 10 feet from the property line. Please feel free to email or call me if you have any questions. The next one is from Mr. and Mrs. S-U-N-D-A-R-A-J-U of 4911 Park Manor Drive. We support. That's it. And the next one is from J-U-N-G-B-O-K, last name S-E-O. Dear sir or madam, my name is Jungbok Seo, who lives at 4879 Park Manor Drive, Troy, Michigan. Regarding zoning board of appeals scheduled on January 19th of 2021 for Nitu and Ambu from 4928 Park Manor Drive, I support this application and have no objections to it. Please let me know if you have any questions. Next one. Hello, we support them putting the deck and have no objection. Good night. Okay. Didn't see it's from. Um, to whom it may concern, we are the neighbors of Ambu and Nitu for 4928 Park Manor Drive. We just want to inform you that we support their deck protect and have no objections. Please, if not hesitate to call us if you have any questions. Elias and Lucien Zini, Z-E-N-I-H. And that would be all of the public comment for this case.
Thank you very much, Ms. Friends. Any other comments from the public? Hearing that, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board table for interaction with city staff, uh, debate, discussion, or possible action. Any member of the board, Mr. McCauley?
I'll start. Um, basically, I want to look at these back when we had the applicant for 4895. And at that point in time, there's probably only about five houses that when you walk out, if you were to walk out the back patio doors, sliding glass doors from the rear of the house that are at ground level. All the rest of them are somewhere between six and eight feet elevated from that point, just like the application we saw at 8595. And all those are going in, going back into the 25-foot required open space. They do have that three-foot or approximately area that they can put a walkout small deck and walk down to a patio as an option. Um, this is one of the concerns we had that when Mr. Rodman was on the board as representative for the planning that we're looking at, how does this happen? How is this being approved? Um, it's, I think it's terrible for these homeowners, but I see no hardship in this whatsoever other than the fact they bought a house with a maximum footprint and a maximum on their lot. And they, when they bought that, they bought a house that has no ability to be able to build out add a room, do anything else because of that maximum footprint. And my feeling is the same as this house, as it was in 4895, that there's no hardship here that we're looking at other than the fact they want to put a deck on there. There's no other reason to do it. So I am not supporting this. And I do believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that that, um, somebody has taken it past us and gone on to a different level with this to figure out what they can and can't do. And so at that point in time, I don't know what our action will be, but, um, I'm not, I am, I am not voting for this. I would postpone it if there's other actions down the road that are being looked at, so the applicant doesn't lose his money. Otherwise, I am against this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Mathur. Ask you a question, Mr. McCauley. Um, I'm not sure what you mean by someone else taking it to another level. Um, I don't know what that's in reference to. Is that through a city?
Mr. Monstee, can you address that?
Legal action?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, I believe what Mr. McCauley is referring to is the applicant for the other property on Park Manor that was heard at the November meeting has filed an appeal of the denial of the variance to the Oakland County Circuit Court.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I would just say to that, Mr. McCauley, you know, litigation doesn't, you know, uh, impede our ability to act here today. Uh, and I understand your concern, that's for sure. But I would say, um, now I have a better understanding after Mr. Monstee made his comments. Um, postponing this um, before an outcome in another, uh, unrelated to this application, um, I would say is not advisable for the board because once again, we're not restricted based on what someone's legal remedies might be, you know, through an appeal. And of course, an appeal might be heard or dismissed or altered in many different ways. So I would just say postponing it uh, would not be advisable. There is a petitioner before us with a request. In my opinion, I believe that the board should, um, either, uh, take action one way or the other and then move on to the next agenda item. Mr. Green?
Um, I, uh, I'm going to respectfully disagree. I think we should postpone it. Not on behalf of the, or pardon, not a not with regard to the pending litigation. Um, but, uh, with regards to, uh, as was mentioned, our previous liaison to the planning commission did take it to the commission, and his response the following month was, because this was November to December, was, uh, that they agreed this was a concern, that this was uh, something that needed to be addressed as to whether uh, the the developer had, not the specific developer, but whether developers can, um, uh, act within the letter but not the intent uh, of the cluster ordinance. Uh, and if this is such a situation where it imposes undue hardship on a homeowner or not, uh, that is something that they need to look at and uh, to determine whether this, that the code needs revising um, to, to, uh, either clarify or allow or, or, uh, uh, or whatever that might be. And so, uh, knowing that the planning commission is going to be discussing this, um, as much as, uh, we are, as you've said, we are independent, we are an appeals board from, in many cases, uh, decisions made by council or planning commission, not that council, but the planning commission. So, um, uh, I would say that we should hold off on this until we hear uh, what planning uh, decision, public planning commission decides, or uh, if our liaison, our new liaison comes back and reports that this is going to take some time, we can bring this back to the table and, and rule with the understanding that the, uh, the petitioner can come back with something later.
Mr. Evans and Brock?
Um, any decision we make should be irrelevant of what the, uh, planning commission does, because if the planning commission changes the cluster to reduce the requirement for backyard setback, that just means the petitioner doesn't need a variance anymore. Um, it makes the case mute. Um, if we, and I voted in favor of the last request because I, and I see in this request the same thing, but more so because this has more topography variation than the last one. It's not just the the elevation at the egress from the house, um, with the sliding glass door, but it's, the slope of the yard is more aggressive on this one. And there's a much larger setback from this house. I mean, this house, like the petitioner said, is 300 and plus feet from the rear to the next property, which is the road. Um, we set up, uh, the city set up uh, zoning ordinance where you get a credit for making as much common area as possible, but at the expense of having the backyard and the front yard for each individual house. And now, because of the setbacks, they, there's all sorts of open space, but they can't even but they can't even use their yard for reasonable use, which a deck is a reasonable use that's very common within the city. So I think the zoning ordinance needs to be changed and the petitioner has a reasonable request that meets our criteria, the five criteria. So unless someone else wants to speak on the item, I'm prepared to make a resolution.
Mr. McCauley would like to speak. Mr. McCauley?
I disagree with you, Mr. Eisenbacher, only in the degree that if we allow the, if we grant petitioner this today, then the city comes back, the Planning Commission comes back with different parameters for what they would like to see, and it doesn't meet it. We've now set us a precedence that we're going to allow this in the future. Whereas if we let them set the standards, then we have something to work within the parameters. And so that way, we don't have to set a precedence by what we're doing by, he wants 10 feet away. The Planning Commission might come back and say, guess what? Wrong, you allowed decks 10 feet off. So you've got to have 15-foot minimum. So then all of a sudden, we've already made this, approved this larger. So now we're setting a precedence for future ones, which basically every home in there is going to want one except for the four homes that are on level ground where you walk out the back door onto the, onto a property. And if you looked at it, which I did, and I looked at all those houses, that his backyard, petitioner's backyard, if you go to the side of it, there's neighbors right there. So there's a house right next to his facing, is basically adjacent to it. So that way, their backyard is facing their side yard and his deck will be basically extending out in view of the petitioner to the south. So, which is being built right now. So last time I was there. So that deck will be sticking out. So the neighbor to the south of him will be looking at his deck out of his backyard window.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McCauley. Mr. Green, we've heard from you. Is there another member of the board who hasn't been heard? Mr. Henkri?
There was one applicant, I think, in November, as it was mentioned. Now, if another homeowner comes forward at the next meeting, say, or, or, or meeting after that, before the zoning ordinance is updated or before the Planning Commission has given a decision, will this be kind of then taken on a case-by-case basis? And does that in any way then kind of affect the uniformity of what you would like to see in that subdivision? Because it looks like there is another city body that is, that has taken cognizance of this issue and is looking at it. So should we try to see there is some kind of uniformity so that there is a common, there is a zoning ordinance that all the homeowners will follow or will we just take it a case at a time until the zoning ordinance changes?
It's a good question. I'm going to call on Mr. Green next. It is a case-by-case basis because the zoning has been set for this. This petitioner would not be in front of us if the zoning allowed this. So having said that, the zone, I know you're new to the ZBA. The zoning board deals with everything case-by-case because each parcel, to Mr. Eisenbacher's point, really is unique, although there are some that are practically identical or mirror images. But yes, I would, I would, I would argue that we do take everything case-by-case. And I would just say this, that if the date was correct, November was the last time we dealt with, in this subdivision, with a similar request. Here it is mid-January. And I know governmental bodies don't act, you know, like a fast food enterprise where it's like quick and fast necessarily. But as far as I know, there hasn't been any action taken by planning. They may be reviewing it. Secondly, the Planning Commission is not the ultimate authority here. Planning Commission would potentially recommend a change, potentially, we don't know that. They might just say, forget it, we're moving on. But then where does it go after that if they did recommend a change? The city council? So we're talking about potentially postponing something where a city council might not touch this for, potentially for a year or never. So the whole point, and, you know, I know there are newer members on this board. This zoning board has not postponed anything during my tenure related to possible changes that may or may not happen amongst several governmental bodies, ever. And if someone wants to prove me wrong, I'm all ears. But the whole point is, if there is a variation change or a setback change that goes through planning successfully and then the city council, but let's say the petitioner here, their request still wouldn't be met with that, they would have to update anyway what they're presenting to the zoning board. So at this point in time, I would say we need to take action on this tonight. We are in full faculties of what the law is as per our briefing by the city administration. And the thing that comes to mind, and I don't want to be silly, but the thing that comes to mind here is somebody getting a speeding ticket essentially. And this is not a great analogy, and I'll acknowledge that. Somebody gets a speeding ticket and then says, well, your honor, I don't want to be held to account for that speeding ticket because why here that the city traffic commission or committee or public safety committee is potentially going to look at this down the road. And I'm not trying to infer that the petitioner here has done anything wrong, not at all. I'm just saying that we know what the law is, zoning law. That's what an ordinance is, it's a law. And we can take action. And I'm not saying we should take action one way or the other. I'm just saying the possibility of taking action tonight is here. It is real. And that's my opinion. And I'm going to call on Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Am I audible correct? Thank you. I do very much understand that logic. And it is, I don't, I don't question that we do know what the code is today. We know what the ordinance is. We know why he's, why the petitioner is here. He's here because right now it's not allowed. But that's, that is our mandate is to determine that. It's, it is what we're here for. And so if we're here on that basis, and we are, then the question of, of the hardship comes up. And as Mr. McCauley noted, there are only four other properties, four total properties in this development that are at ground level with, with this, what would be a walkout for petitioner. And so it's not, it's not so much as if the, this permitting this would, would change the character of the place dramatically, one way or the other. Because there are a few with something like this, but not at that level. And there are many with a similar situation to the petitioner. As Mr. Evans said, they are allowed to build a small, like minimum walkout, what is it, three feet? Something very much like that. And then steps down so that there is a viable effective point of egress there. But I would say that while the petitioner did make that decision of their own volition, it is, it is most unfortunate that this is something that was, I'm not suggesting it was concealed, but it was certainly not. We've already had two just in the past month or so, that it was not something of which the homeowner was clearly cognizant. And that's a, very much a caveat emptor situation. But it's a difficult one nonetheless for, for many homeowners. I, I am still struggling with my vote. Just my thoughts.
Thank you. Another member of the board. Vice Chairman Bosenbrook?
I'll try to be quick. I largely agree with Mr. McCauley. So I think that, you know, we're not creating precedent that binds us in other cases. And each case is taken on its own facts. That's what we owe to each petitioner. But as I look at the previous case and then I look at the facts and the record developed here, I don't think similarly that there's been enough evidence of a practical difficulty shown. I don't think that there's anything specifically unique about the property, its characteristics. And I don't believe that, or I do believe that this was a difficulty created by either the current, previous owner, taking into consideration what has already been said about the equities of that. But I think it's a true statement. And I don't think any of the other factors of practical difficulty have been proven to entitle them to a variance. So I do think that we can't predict what the Planning Commission would do. And I agree that a postponement to some unforeseen date doesn't seem like an appropriate thing. We need, I think we need to act on this tonight and let this, the Planning Commission do what it will do with it. I do think that this forum probably is not the right place to address what is really the problem. And that is, which you've already talked about, which is the problem with how this, maybe the zoning ordinance is written and how the builder took advantage of it. But I think based on the record here, I can't support the variance request and I would not support, I would vote to reject it.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Bosenbrook. I would just like to make a quick comment. Mr. Kenkri and Mr. Green both alluded to in perhaps different ways. I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth about egress from a home. And I think Mr. Kenkri may have said, and I could be wrong on this, or implied that there would be, a home needs three egresses. I could be wrong on that. I used to live in a single detached family home in Troy that had two doors. And there wasn't a possibility, it was a small home, to have a third door. So I just, we need to be careful. You know, there, obviously, all these homes that are in that subdivision that have the extra feet footage that goes up from the rear of the home are in compliance with the zoning or the city of Troy or the building department would not have issued permits for those homes to be erected. So let's just be clear about that right now. And I understand if somebody wants something like this, you know, or the possibility of an emergency. Okay, I get it. That's your want, that's your desire. But I think to Mr. or Vice Chairman Bosenbrook, you know, where is the hardship? And that's what I'm struggling with as well. Mr. Green?
I promised to be brief this time, seven words. This sucks, but I'm voting no. I, I, I can't. I don't think we're going to get any further with this. I, I do hope that this is clarified, potentially in favor of the petitioner and his neighbors in future by the Planning Commission and ratified by city council as appropriate. But we, right, we're working with what we got now. So with that said, I move that we deny the petitioner his request.
Okay, there's a motion, denial for the petitioner's request. Mr. McCauley, seconds. Is there any further discussion by a member of the board? Mr. Kenkri, please.
Yeah, just for the record, I did not mention anything about egress.
Okay. I thought somebody else did, but I thought that was used. I apologize. It's kind of hard to keep eye on the bouncing ball here on the court. Any other discussion by a member of the board? Jackie, I believe we're prepared for a vote, even though I don't see you on my screen. Ms. Friends, there you are.
Yeah, I'm here. Okay, Mr. Green?
No.
Mr. Henkri?
No.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Excuse me?
Can we clarify something a second?
Yes.
You just voted no on your own resolution. A yes, I think would be more correct.
Good point, Mr. Eisenbacher.
Thank you.
Yes. So a yes vote is for denial of the petitioner's request.
Okay.
A no vote is against the resolution of denial and potentially brings it back to the table for the board to consider some, some other possible action. Not necessarily. So a yes vote is for denial and no vote is against the resolution of denial.
Okay.
Let's start over.
Thank you. And apologies.
That's quite all right. I should have caught that. But Mr. Eisenbacher always is very tough on the facts, so.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenbacher. Yeah, it's a terrible thing.
Mr. Green?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kenkri?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
No.
Mr. Caltounis?
Yes.
Mr. Bosenbrook?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. The resolution is agreed to. The petitioner's request has been rejected. Sir, have a good night. And we are going to move on to item 5B exponentially or expeditiously. We have a very, I think, a busy evening with this one. And Mr. Evans, I don't know if the petitioner's representative is with us?
Mr. Safa is present.
Okay, I don't see that gentleman.
A F?
There we go. Okay.
Mr. Yvonne Contini?
Okay. So at this point in time, we move on to 5B, which is related to 4095 through 4115 Crooks and property adjacent to those addresses. Mr. Evans, can you present to us information you have for us?
Yes, IT, could you give me the ability to be the presenter? Thank you.
While we're in transition, because we're going to be dealing with quite a bit of public comments, it's my plan, unless a board member desires otherwise, it would be my plan for us to have a break around nine o'clock tonight for, to use the facilities. And then we'll come back and take it from there if there are no objections. Please proceed, Mr. Evans.
Thank you. As the chair indicated, this is a request for a property at 40954115 Crooks and property adjacent. Applicant Stafford Sam Stafa, Tolbrook North LLC developer appeals the November 10th, 2020 decision of the city of Troy's Planning Commission, P C, to deny the preliminary site plan, P S P, for its Crooks Road Town Homes project. To deny the preliminary site plan PSP for its Crooks Road Town Homes project to the city's. Zoning Board of Appeals, ZBA. The developer requests that the ZBA reverse the PC's decision and grant PSP approval. In my presentation, this is an area of the. Neighborhood. This property is outlined in red. The property is located north of Waddles. And west of Crooks on Crooks Road. Now, the subject property as indicated here in this uh kind of purply color. As well as property to the south is zoned neighborhood node. Properties indicated in yellow to the west, north, and across Crooks to the east are zoned at single family residential. And that's a more close up view of the property. And as indicated in the request, the planning commission on November tenth. Voted to deny the preliminary site plan approval. So they're here to request that that denial be reversed. I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Uh, all the members of the board, is there? Any inquiry uh a member would like to make of city staff at this time? Okay, seeing that there isn't, we are going to call onto the petitioner. I know that there seems to be two representatives. I would just ask you gentlemen, uh, that one would be the spokesman for the request. And then if he wants to call upon your colleague. Because of uh certain expertise or what have you, or knowledge in a particular area, then you would do so, but we are not interested in having. Two carbon copy presentations of the same package of information, if that makes sense and interest of time. So I will call on uh which, okay, Mr. O'Boy, is that how? Oh boy.
Oh boy.
Can you hear me? Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, excellent. So my name's Greg O'Boy. Uh, I'm an attorney with Carson Fisher in Bloomfield Hills, Michigan. Uh, our firm represents Tolbrook North and the Stoffas in its appeal this evening. Uh, with us today is the principals of Tolbrook, uh, Arben and Sam Stoffa. And also with me today is Carmen Avantini. Mr. Avantini is a municipal planner with CIB Planning. Uh, I believe that Arben did submit a copy of his CV uh to planning staff today, so hopefully you have that uh in your materials. Uh, as Mr. Evans said.
O'Boy, if I could just interject real quick, since we are dealing with a large packet that you presented to us. And there's a lot of information from the public as well. Um, what we're going to request of you is. You, you don't have to go page by page, you know, paragraph by paragraph, because we, we already have it. All. Members of the board have received that. So if you want to, you know, err on the side of doing an overview and then. Clearly want to drill down on a particular point, so I just want to. Guide you.
Yes, Chairman Clark, I had uh no intent on uh.
Please.
Reciting the eleven page statement of appeal. We also have uh, I think about a dozen exhibits that were also submitted. Uh, so I am not going to recite that statement of appeal. Uh, I am going to introduce the project and the site plan. Um, deal with what maybe some legal issues and then turn it over to Mr. Avantini who will address. Uh, the planning issues that really deal with compatibility and transition. And then uh, once he's done, I'll, I'll just summarize. And uh, so we should be done before uh. You want to, you want to break, if that's a, a goal of this.
Sure.
So, yeah, we're, we're uh, Tolbrook is looking to appeal the decision of. Uh, the planning commission, uh, it's decision November tenth. Uh, the project is for a permitted use under the zoning ordinance. It does not require any variances, exceptions, or waivers. Uh, from the zoning ordinance uh is our belief. That the commission, the planning commission's decision to deny the site plan uh was arbitrary, capricious, based on no findings of material facts. Constituted an abuse of discretion and was also based on an interpretation of the zoning ordinance. Um, I believe the city attorneys provided you uh your standard review. This isn't a variance request. It's a, it's a different standard of review because it is an appeal. Um, there are four ways um for the, this board to appeal. Uh, or to reverse the decision of the planning commission. Uh, and I just kind of recited those uh four things for criteria. We believe that we actually meet and satisfy all of these criteria, but it's important that, that this board, only one of those. Is necessary for the board to reverse uh the planning commission. Uh, moving on to the project, uh, as Mr. Evans showed on the map, northwest corner of uh Crooks and Waddles. Uh, it's a five point seven two acre parcel of land. Um, single family to the north and to the west. Uh, vacant neighborhood node to the south. Um, the project is seventy four townhomes. Uh, in thirteen buildings and as I said, it requires no waivers or variances from the zoning ordinance. Um. The project is a permitted use under the zoning ordinance. This fact was confirmed uh by the city's planner, Carlisle Wartman. They said, I quote, "Overall, we find the proposed use to be appropriate for the site." Also, uh, city attorney, city attorney with regards to this project stated during a planning commission meeting. The proposed development is permitted by right on the subject property. So uh, not only is it the use permitted, um, when we get to the objective standards about setbacks. Um, lock coverage and minimum space. This project is modest in scope compared to what could be developed on this site. Um, there are no requirements for setbacks on the north and south property line, yet. The project is providing forty foot setback to the north, eighty foot setback to the south. The west boundary line requires a thirty foot setback. This project is providing a hundred and thirty nine foot setback. Uh, zoning would permit a four story and fifty five foot building. It requires a minimum of a two story building, the ordinance does. This project is a three story project. Um, also, the property is lower by a few feet to the property to the north. The, the single family residential can have a midpoint height of uh thirty feet. Uh, the midpoint height on the buildings to the north against the single family residential. Um, are at twenty seven feet, nine inches. So when you add in the actual midpoint height of these buildings. Plus the lowered elevation, these buildings are actually lower than the, than the peak heights of the buildings due to the north. Um. Moving on to the, the planning commission's decision, they made a, they denied the site plan and they gave a, a very short and, and hollow conclusory. Reasoning for denial. They simply said lack of compatibility and inadequate transition. Uh, there's no reference to any specific section in the zoning ordinance and there, and there's no itemization of any facts. Uh, we, we could think that the reasoning is broad and, and subjective, um, and it's hard to know what they would want on the property. So with that, I'm going to talk really briefly about compatibility and, and then turn it over to Carmen. So. The, one of the reasons that they turned down the site was lack of compatibility. What's interesting is they applied a standard that is not present in the neighborhood node district. The neighborhood district is fifteen pages of text. Not anywhere is the word compatible or compatibility present. Uh, the obvious reason is, and this will be discussed in detail by Carmen and it's in the, the letter, is that. When they adopted the form-based zoning for the neighborhood node district, the city. Determined what appropriate uses were for the site. They determined. That these uses that they wanted there were compatible. Our client did not pick. Multi-family residential for the site. The city did. The other uses is retail or, you know, commercial office. So nowhere in the neighborhood node district is the word compatible or compatibility present. So. At the outset, the planning commission was applying a standard that's not present in the zoning ordinance. When we move to the site plan review guideline standards, there is a statement that says. Development shall ensure compatibility to existing commercial districts. Well. There is no existing commercial district here uh to protect, so the application of compatibility to this site. Um, is inapplicable. And that's, that's it for me at this point. I'm going to turn it over to, to Mr. Avantini. He'll, he'll address. Um, more detail about compatibility and uh the state zoning statute, the Michigan Planning Act. And that nonetheless, the project is compatible and then he'll, he'll go into a transition. So uh Carmen, uh, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Greg. Um, thank you. I'm Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, I'm here to discuss the planning commission denial of this subject development that Mr. O'Boy just provided some detail on. Um, and as he mentioned, this property is located in a form-based code district and just for background purposes, the reason for having a form-based code district. Is to have a more user-friendly zoning ordinance where the use in the design standards are predetermined by the city in the ordinance. Um, so under a form-based code, the developer is approved, approved if the design standards are met. Okay, many communities even approve these administratively and don't have them reviewed by planning commission because that's the intent behind a form-based code. So as you know, the planning commission denied the preliminary site plan for lack of compatibility and inadequate transition. I think that Mr. O'Boy did a good job of discussing the compatibility issue. Um, the uses were already predetermined. And uh, in this application definitely meets that. So uh, it does provide a, an appropriate use, a tiered use is what's. The ordinance calls for between the single family residential neighborhood and the ultimate use that's at the corner. The second reason for denial was inadequate transition. If you look at page one fifty one of the zoning ordinance, it states that the, it, this is located in, in, in um neighborhood node B district within the form-based code. And it says the NMB category allows the node to develop in a tiered manner. With more intense developments and uses permitted within the core of the node. And less intense projects providing a buffer for the residential area. So. Clearly between the use being permitted in this district and this statement of what the, it's intended to do. Um, it, it clearly meets those ordinance requirements. The other thing that's worth noting too is the ordinance does address transitional features. And you can, you'll see that in the ordinance, you'll see that in the planning consultant's review letter. Um, so it does address the transitional features. As Mr. O'Boy had discussed what those things are. Um, and this particular project does meet those standards. But instead, the planning commission decision was based on inadequate transition. Which in essence refers back to whether it was an appropriate transition use, transitional use. Which is obviously not supported by the ordinance since this particular use is permitted in the NMB district at that particular location. You know, we can only go by the record that's before us and the planning commission used inadequate transition as a reason for denial along with lack of compatibility. Um, and they had no explanation as to why or did not reference standards or why this application did not meet those standards. Um, when I teach planning and zoning courses across the state, which I've done for many, many years. I constantly stress the need to provide detailed justification for project denials. This typically includes reference to a planning report prepared by the staff or a planning consultant. Or alternately, a review of ordinance standards as they apply to the request, similar to what you do for variances, for example. No such detail was provided in the planning commission motion, making it virtually impossible to determine what ordinance standards. Were utilized and supposedly not met. So in conclusion, the planning commission failed to use and follow applicable ordinance standards for denial involving um. Uh, involving a project that had a permitted use and met all applicable ordinance standards. In fact, this is the first time in my lengthy career where I've seen a site plan denied for a permitted use that meets ordinance requirements. So I'd like to turn this back over to Mr. O'Boy for any concluding on our C mic.
Thanks, Carmen. When we talk about transition. The, there is. A, a section in the site plan, it's hard to decipher what the planning commission was referring to. Um, transitional features, but they didn't, they just said transition. And there is a statement in section. Uh, eight oh six of the site plan review standards that talks about there shall, you know, exist. That the development shall provide a transition between land uses through application of the following requirements. Building design and character to the surrounding area in relation to the building and parking placement, landscape, street, streetscape and architectural design. Streetfront shall provide a variety of architectural expression that is appropriate for the area. And building design shall achieve compatible transition between areas with different height. This project um has. The appropriate transition. It is a residential use. It's buildings in a campus-like setting. The buildings are. Um, going to have higher quality materials than, than the, the actual residential homes to the north. These building frassades are only going to be brick and cement board siding. There's no vinyl siding, um, which is uh present in, in the residential neighborhood to the north. These house, these buildings are uh shorter or. Um, not as tall as the houses to the north. Um, the residential parking is going to be enclosed in garages. Um, this project does not require any uh tree mitigation. We have excessive setbacks. Um, we have these house, they're, they're townhomes. They're, they have gabled roof, gabled roofs. Um, so very residential in nature. So this all. Brings forward that it is a, an appropriate transition. And as Carmen said earlier, the transition is to the, to the node to the south. There is going to be a more intense use south of this project. It's either going to be a four-story office building. Uh, a medical office building or retail. So this is the buffer between the residential to the west and to the north. And to a, a more intense use that's planned for the south at, at, at some point in time. Um, so the, the transition, it, it, there is adequate transition. We just believe that the planning commission uh just disregarded the facts to it. I want to speak about another project that the planning commission approved last year. Last April, there was a very similar townhome project approved by the planning commission up on. Square Lake Road just west of Dequinder. This project um is a three-story townhome product, very similar in style to this. It also abuts single family residential. It is also neighborhood node uh B. And this project was approved uh by the planning commission. The word compatible or transition um was never considered, but this project has sixty two units and thirteen buildings. On three point eight seven acres and has midpoint building heights of thirty four feet, ten inches. That project is twenty three percent more dense than this project, has buildings that are taller, has. Has smaller setbacks, less open space and more lock coverage than the Tolbrook project. And that got approved. And then six months later in November. Um, this project, which has, you know, less intense than that project and is similarly situated. Didn't get approved and these standards got applied. Um, and this is violating the city's zoning ordinance where it, it is the intent of site plan review to provide consistent and uniform, you know, methods of review. And which then leads me to my next thing. It doesn't go unnoticed that, you know, at the planning commission, um, residents. Um, near the property and away from the property, a voice their displeasure with the project. Uh, I saw it as they're not really upset with the developer or the project. They're really upset with the master plan and zoning ordinance. Um. Whatever, something's going to be built there. It's not going to be one story and the zoning ordinance doesn't permit single family residential. So. This is the appropriate use for the site, a moderate density, multi-family residential housing of modest size and scope. Again, providing three times the required open space and multiples on the setback requirements. And this zoning ordinance, um, what, in the master plan, that, the zoning ordinance implemented the master plan. But that was two separate legislative process that the city undertook. It didn't happen in a vacuum. Um, there were numerous public meetings, um, and notices went out to the residents at that time. At that time was when the residents had their opportunity to really be concerned about what use is going to be there. In the site planning process, the planning commission's merely administering the zoning ordinance to make sure projects are in compliance. Well, this project is in absolute compliance and exceeds it. And there could be no more appropriate use for this site. But the site was determined appropriate by the city long ago when it legislated to make this project a neighborhood node district, site type B. And we have laws in the legislative process to, is to have order and to avoid mob rule. Unfortunately, given the inconsistent nature of the planning commission and its disregard for the facts in support of this project, it almost appears that the mob rule, you know, has won. And that's why we're here today. So as we said a lot, you have your four standards of criteria. We believe that we satisfy all of them, although we only need to satisfy one. And I'll just recite just a handful of facts here, but the planning commission, they issued a hollow conclusion that merely stated a denial for lack of compatibility and inadequate transition without providing any findings of fact or references to the zoning ordinance to support its decision. The planning commission, without any findings of fact to support its decision, disregarded all the facts that demonstrate that the project is compatible, even though that's not even a requirement, and provides appropriate transition. The planning commission applied a standard of compatibility upon the project where there is no applicable compatibility standard. The planning commission approved a similarly situated but more intense development of a similar-style townhome project without application of compatibility and transition standards. The planning commission violated the intent of the zoning ordinance, which is to provide a consistent and uniform method of review. The planning commission disregarded statements by the city's planner and the city's attorney that stated that the project is appropriate for the site and the city attorney who stated that the project is permitted by right. Planning commission disregarded the fact that the project does not require any variances, exceptions, or waivers from the zoning ordinance. The planning commission disregarded all the design features of the project that provide an appropriate transition. The planning commission disregarded the fact that the city, through its master plan and zoning ordinance, already determined the use proposed by the project to be compatible and appropriate. The planning commission violated its affirmative obligation to approve a site plan under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act as the site plan contains the information required by the zoning ordinance and is in compliance with the conditions imposed under the zoning ordinance. The planning commission applied subjective standards to the project that are vague, overbroad, lacking definite standards that give Tolbrook no notice, direction, or standards as to what would be adequate compatibility or transition. Therefore, we believe that the planning commission decision was arbitrary and capricious. The decision was based, not only on erroneous finding of material fact, but just a blatant disregard of the facts, that the planning commission constituted abuse of its discretion, and that the planning commission decision was based on an erroneous interpretation of the zoning ordinance. In this case, reversal by the ZBA is fully supported on each and all the requirements, and therefore, we respectfully request that this board reverse the decision of the planning commission and grant preliminary site plan approval to the project. And with that, I am done, Chairman Clark.
Thank you, sir. Two quick things before we go to short recess. Is Ms. Duprein with us, the Assistant City Attorney, who advises the planning commission? There she is.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm present.
When we come back from the break, I'd like to call on you perhaps first because Mr. O'Boyle referenced the city attorney, and I assume that he was referencing you because I understand you advised the planning commission, and I knew you'd be on our call here tonight. So if you have anything to, you know, state or disagree with, I'm going to come back to you here momentarily, just because it's fresh on my mind. And then, gentlemen and lady, Mr. McCauley, can you wait till after the break?
Yes, I just want to make sure that the petitioners have finished with what they have, and then we come back, we're going to have the opportunity to ask them questions if we need to. If not, then we go to the city attorney, Julie Duprein, correct?
Yes, the petitioners representative just concluded his remarks.
Okay.
But I would just say, Mr. O'Boyle, I would be very, I'm a big proponent of First Amendment free speech, and so just bear that in mind. But also, we have decorum here, and I would just advise you that using the phraseology, mob rule, in this point in history, be very careful about using that. A lot of people would find that offensive vis-à-vis recent current events. And so I would just, you know, you have a right to say it. I'm not saying you don't. But I would just advise you to perhaps re-packaging those words if you want to make that point in a different way. And that is this one member's perspective. So at this point in time, since after nine, we are going to stand at ease at the recall of the chairman for a bathroom break. And so I plan on recalling us back maybe in seven or eight minutes. And at this point in time, we are standing at ease. And we will go to inquiries of the petitioners representative by a member of the board here in a moment. I do want to call on Ms. Duprein if we have anything to say regarding the petitioners' representatives' comments at this point in time. I'll call on you. If not, that's fine, we'll just move right on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of ZBA, thank you for the opportunity. I don't really have much to add to the conversation tonight. I can confirm that what Mr. O'Boyle said, attributing statements to me, that the neighborhood, in the neighborhood node district, this use is permitted. Hopefully, all of you had the opportunity to review the memo that our office prepared for you. The table that I attached, the use group table 506C1 certainly suggests, or, you know, states that the use is permitted. So I have no objection to what Mr. O'Boyle said on that point. I would point out simply that this, I think it's a little bit disingenuous for Mr. O'Boyle to say that the petitioner in the planning commission wasn't given any direction as to how the planning commission was voting. The meeting was almost five hours long. It lasted from 7:00 PM until 11:45 PM. Almost every single, if not every single, member of planning commission articulated reasons for and against this particular project. So the record, obviously, planning commission speaks to its resolution, but the entire public record does demonstrate all of the reasons that the members of planning commission cited for the project and against the project. So with that, like I said, I don't have much more to add unless anyone has any specific questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll start, at this point in time, we will go back to the board members related to their questions of the petitioners' representative. And then when we conclude that, then we'll go to city staff. And Mr. McCauley, you had your hand raised. Do you want to inquire of the petitioners' representative or city staff?
City attorneys, question.
Okay.
And I don't know which one, I don't know which city attorney this goes to. I got a question from past experiences in planning commission, a site plan that has been approved or denied, applied to the ZBA, and were, said that they didn't have any standing in the ZBA to rule on that. So are they, is this correct that we should be even hearing this in that regards, that they have standing here to be able for us to hear this on the site plan?
That was contained in the memo from our city attorney's office.
Yes, Mr. McCauley, yes, the short answer to the question is yes. The ZBA is charged under the city zoning ordinance with appealing, hearing appeals from administrative decisions. Whether or not to grant a site plan is administrative, is an administrative decision. So that yes, this vote, it is appropriate for this board to hear this particular appeal. It is required under the state statute, and it's also required in the Michigan court rules.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Vice Chairman Bosenbrock, do you have a question of the petitioners' representative?
I do have a question.
I do have a question for the petitioners representative. And it's actually two questions, but I think they're closely related. So maybe it's one question. And I guess I'll start with Mr. Oblooy and perhaps Mr. Avantini also has something to say. My, my question is regarding the statement in the, your position paper on page seven where is the statement is made that section 8.06 of the zoning ordinance, which is the design standards, doesn't apply to the project. And I guess my question is maybe a broad one, but help me understand what is the relationship here between? Let me get the section right. Section 5.03, talking about the neighborhood nodes and what you have to do as the petitioner under that section as it relates to section 8.06. What am I, I'm a little confused about the level of discretion and that the Planning Commission is allowed to exercise when applying the design standards to something like this. So I guess I understand the point that, I understand your argument that about the lack of factual detail or lack of factual record put into the resolution. But I'm trying to understand when you say that the entirety of 8.06 doesn't apply to, to their decision making. And I guess by implication, you're saying that only 5.03 applies. Can you help me for, I guess from your, your perspective, understand how that, how those two work together and how in this kind of a situation, if, if the zoning board, I mean, the Planning Commission didn't think that, you know, the type of transitional features that were in the plan were adequate. I mean, do they just don't not have a role in saying that and not approving it? Or I guess those are some of the questions I'm trying to sort through.
Sure. I'll, I'll, I'll address a couple of things. So I did not say that the entirety of 8.06 doesn't apply. I do believe it applies. With regards to, you know, this project complies with the zoning ordinance and its use in, in the site plan. The Planning Commission only identified two things where they thought it was deficient. And one was compatibility. And so in 8.06A, that, that begins with the development shall ensure compatibility to existing commercial districts. Why I said that that doesn't apply is that there is no existing commercial district to this site. That's why that word compatibility, that standard doesn't apply in this situation in my viewpoint. Looking at the neighborhood node, which is a, a 15-page ordinance, which is part of a larger form-based ordinance. You know, nowhere in there do they talk about compatibility. So the project has to meet all the requirements in the neighborhood node district. Then as part of the, you know, then it's got to meet the, the site plan requirements. But we believe we, we need all that, but that the application of the term compatibility is inapplicable in this situation.
Okay. So, so let's, so let's take the compatibility to the sites. I understand, now I understand your argument now about that being, the wording seems to apply to existing commercial districts. But as, as far as the, and, and maybe I just misread your paper and I apologize. But as far as the transitional aspect of it, where it says in 8.06 that the development shall provide a transition between land uses through application of the following requirements. And then it lists three bullet points, building design, street fronts and building design for architectural styles and so forth. I guess, is that something that the Planning Commission has the right to say you have to do that as a site plan? And if you don't, then we can reject it? Or again, are we, are we going back to the neighborhood node? Zoning ordinance is kind of what governs or controls?
So, you know, it was, so with regards to 8.06A where you, those, those three items about the transition. We, you know, looking at the resolution, they said inadequate transition. So when we, you know, what does that mean? You know? So this is the only place that we could find anything that would be applicable to this situation. I don't know exactly if, if this is the, what they meant. They didn't refer to a section. They didn't support it with any facts. So I, I looking at the site plan review standards, you know, looked at the word transition. It's part of the site plan review guideline standards. It has to apply. We think we meet that. We think that the, the way this project is, you know, architecturally designed and laid out with superior products, increased setbacks, three times the open space requirement. It's residential in nature against a residential use that, you know, it's, it's multiple buildings. There's no one out. We feel that we meet those standards and that, that the facts evidence that. But that's our opinion, you know? I, I don't know what the Planning Commission thought, you know? And, and Mr. Frane is correct. It was a long meeting. Now, a lot of it was adjoining people, you know, voicing their complaints. But you know, it's, we're reduced downs when we're talking about an appeal, we're reduced down to what, what the minutes are. That's, that's what we're appealing from. And that's what we get to use. And so that's what the resolution stated. They didn't provide, you know, any further detail, you know, so it's difficult.
Right. And I, I understand that, that part of the position that you're, that you're taking. I think for now I'm, I'm set. I appreciate, appreciate your follow up on that.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Bosenbrook. Another member of the board, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two things, I, I agree with what was stated by the others who have spoken. Some of your, your linguistic decisions have been both disingenuous and inflammatory unnecessarily. I understand that you are attempting to prove caprice. But the capriciousness is not necessarily speaking to them being a mindless, riling horde of, of folk, not. Back to the, the matter at hand, there were a couple of points that I, and maybe I missed that were under, under question. You were waiting on traffic information and then also traffic and then AD parking or my, my mistake? No, is it the wetlands? How, how are you going to address the wetlands? I suppose this is for Mr. Avantini more than anything. And the, the traffic and the parking situation to ensure that that's compliant because I believe those were waiting on studies.
I thought we addressed everything and those were issues in the previous, Mr. Chairman, those were issues in the, on previous reviews. But those were all resolved prior to the, the, the final meeting where we were to not, those were all settled. Those are regulated wetlands and, and obviously there, we have to stay out of those. And more than enough, and I think the big issue was visitor parking. And more than enough visitor parking was added to the project.
Okay. So that covers that. The, the wetlands, yes, I saw that. Sorry. Did you, that it was conceded that that was and that you would plant trees and, and work around that. I'm, I'm slightly unclear on what was there, pardon, what is there as, as far as like scale of wetland? Like, well, how much of it is being encroached upon relative to the size of the property? Like what percentage of the property is wetland?
What percentage of the property is wetland?
Give or take. I, I am looking for like.
I, I couldn't tell you. I, I know that we're, we're not getting into the, to the wetlands whatsoever. I have to, I have to look and get back with you. I just don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. And, and I'll, I'll grant you that you are working to, to the minutes, which is, you're right. But speaking more to the concerns and trying to condense that down because I suspect it was a, a fair bit of, and this is not to cast dispersions, but a bit of NIMBY, right? There's like people don't want more in their area. As a general rule, they like the neighborhoods, the way they are. We are in general conservative humans. We are, but so what steps? Do you feel that there are any concerns of merit that were brought by the, the public at the previous meeting that could potentially be addressed to, to maybe settle that down? Not that you have to. I'm just, I'm trying to understand. If you say you've met everything and looking here, I definitely see a case for that. But there's a whole lot of people who say, no, they're not the professionals. But what, essentially, what do you say to them?
Well, what I say to them is that the, the, the city undertook the legislative process to adopt, you know, the neighborhood node master plan. That was one long process. They then adopted the neighborhood nodes throughout the city and applied uses to, to the various sites. And it's, it's dictated by how big the node is and what type of street you're on dictates the type of uses that you're permitted. That took place long ago and long before my client got the property under contract, you know, to even develop it. They're just playing within, within the rules that the city established. And when the city established the zoning ordinance, the Michigan Planning Act, the Michigan Zoning and Neighboring Act, and even the city's zoning ordinance requires that the ordinances provide that the uses to be regulated are harmonious, coordinated and compatible with their adjacent uses. That already took place long ago. And, you know, our client, you know, did their best. They have to make a return. They tried to make a high quality compatible project. As I said, there's no aluminum siding or vinyl siding. It is brick. They have, all the parking is contained inside garages, two car. And there was a couple of iterations of the site plan, you know, it wasn't just one and, a one and done here at the last meeting. And obviously we got held up for COVID last year for the, you know, the entire summer, unfortunately. So there, there's some big time gaps, but there was work to make this a high quality product. We then, I mean, going back even further, we had a, just a smaller piece of land. The buildings were up against the other residential buildings. We, we were able to acquire more land, spread it out more. We got out of the wetlands. So at one point there was some wetland intrusion. We got out of the wetlands with some additional space. Now it added some more units. But it ultimately has resulted in a, in a better, high quality product that is compatible, you know, physically and by use with that product. Which, if it's not this project, it can't be a single, it can't be a single story. It's got to be multiple stories. And it could be an office building. It could be a medical office building. It could be an urgent care. It could be retail. So if, if it's not this use, it's going to be something else that's permitted in this, in this district. But the intent of the zoning ordinance in the neighborhood node district, and Karma can speak to this much better than I can, is that the uses will get more intense such that at the very corner of this node, you're going to have some sort of intense use. And I, you could speculate to, to what that is, but it, it could be four stories and 55 feet tall. And this is the buffer against those uses.
So would it, would it be fair to characterize your summation of things on your side as by right? And the, and that's, that's your, your, essentially your side of the argument that, that planning is not recognizing that?
Yeah, we, yeah, with, with the Planning Commission, we believe that we are by right. And we also believe that we, again, this site is not, we're not maximizing what is permitted. We are granting generous site plan or setbacks way beyond what's required. Again, three times the open space, a multiple, a, a reduction in lock coverage. We could go four stories. We could do it in a single building. We don't have to do it in a campus like, you know, garden style townhome type structure. So we tried to mimic its townhomes. It looks, you know, like a residential house. It isn't. But I mean, this could have been a single building, four-story apartment complex with, you know, setbacks just to provide parking. So, you know, there was no intent to maximize this site to make the highest possible yield. I mean, this is truly intended and designed and architected to be an appropriate buffered use as permitted.
Thank you.
Mr. Green, Mr. McCauley.
Quick question for the petitioner. You talked about parking and it was all inside parking. Is that, is that parking, side-by-side parking or is it stacked parking of the vehicles?
Yeah, it is not. It is side-by-side parking. In a prior iteration, it was stacked. And there were consider, concerns about the, the, the front and back stacking and, and some guest parking. And so when we're, we're able to get some more land, it is side-by-side parking in those garages.
Thank you.
Another member of the board.
Yes. It's another development similar to this one, north of Big Beaver Row on Crooks.
I'm sorry. Is that a question I?
Yeah, it's a question I have. This is the only development. See, there is another development like similar to this one on Big Beaver Row, north of Big Beaver Row.
I, I, I'm unfamiliar with that. I have no idea.
Yeah, you know, I live in the area and I would think there is another similar development like that on Crooks Row, north of Big Beaver Row. Thank you. That's all I want.
Another member of the board, for this petitioners representative, Vice Chairman Bosenbrook.
I don't want to step on anybody's toes if there's other, someone else who wants to speak, but I should have one, one other quick question. Mr. Oblooy, this is regarding section 8.04, which talks about the ZBA's authority and what, what we are, I guess, in a position to do here. And I'm just curious, setting aside the, the issue, the reason of compatibility, because I tend to understand your, your point about the compatibility issue as a reason that they gave. In terms of the, a whole issue of transition and saying that there's, well, one of the arguments is that there's no factual basis for it. In terms of the possibility of, of this board sending it back to the Planning Commission and putting them in the position of trying to articulate actual reasons for us to consider why they, instead of this kind of nebulous, inadequate transition language, if there's actual, a factual statement they could make. I guess, could you respond to that in terms of, as a possible remedy here? Based on what you're asking for?
I, I, I mean, I think that it's, it would be an effort in futility. We go back, they would create a, a new record and a, and a new resolution. I believe that this board is authorized and has the power to reverse that decision without sending it back. And that's what I believe.
All right. Thank you.
Another member of the board would like to be recognized. Okay, it seems that we're, we've exhausted for now, questions from our members of the board. We're going to move on to public hearing. So I will open the public hearing, call on Ms. Friends to share with us both A and B. A being the previous communications with the board.
Maybe you can just give us, I know it was in our packet, a number of communications and then move on to the post-3:00 p.m. communications.
Correct. Okay, I'll start reading.
What are you gonna, I'm sorry. Let me just clarify. What are you gonna start reading?
I'm going to start reading emails that were received today.
Okay.
Post midnight, you know, after midnight through 3 o'clock today. Through 3 o'clock today.
Can you could just give us a summary of the first group that came in before the deadline cutoff? Just a number.
I believe there was 93 emails that were received through midnight last night that were combined and sent to you, Board and the attorneys via an email.
Very good. Okay, please proceed.
Yes. Zoning Board of Appeals members, for all of the reasons stated in the note below of November 10, 2020, to the Troy Planning Commission, I want to reiterate my opposition to the proposed Crooks Road Townhomes development. This developer is bound and determined to redefine our neighborhood with this unsightly and inappropriate project. From an environmental, population density, land space footprint, traffic, wildlife, and many other impacts, this development is totally wrong. I strongly encourage you to deny this appeal. Regards, Tom Shaw. See, I'm sorry, hold on. Tom Shaw's email that he references is from November 10, 2020. Members of the Planning Board, my name is Tom Shaw, and I lived in the Woodlands of Troy subdivision for 30 years. I am writing to express my opposition to the proposed condominium project on the west side of Crooks Road, north of Waddles. I have attended many Planning Board meetings on this topic where my neighbors and I have voiced our opposition to this project. The reasons for our opposition are many and have been expressed numerous times at your meetings. Key points include the negative population density impact these 74 units would have on our neighborhood and surrounding areas, traffic impact on Crooks Road and Waddles, encroachment impact on Woodlands of Troy subdivision, squeezing this large development onto a small amount of land, the size of buildings themselves, and numerous other impacts that are in the minutes of prior meetings. To date, any changes made by the developer to address the major issues expressed at prior meetings have been trivial at best. This development is totally wrong for this area. I ask you to make clear to the developer that he cannot bully his way on this, that he make the substantial changes needed so it's accepted, an accepted part of this community, or find another city to build in. My understanding as the developer of this condo project also was the developer of Woodlands of Troy. Woodlands is a very nice subdivision that was put together by this developer with an eye to having beautiful homes that would grow in value. He was instrumental in putting the covenants and restrictions in place to make sure Woodlands would remain one of the best places to live in Troy. These covenants and restrictions are now administered by the Woodlands of Troy Home Association. If he is allowed to build these ice or condominiums, it will negatively impact the value of our homes and is totally wrong for this area. Tom Shaw. Hold on, I'm sorry. This is too small. To whom it may concern, we are writing to express our opposition to the proposed Crooks Road Townhome project. My wife and I moved our family into our Woodlands subdivision in April of 1989. For the last 31 years, we have enjoyed the benefits of living in the city of Troy. Some of the benefits include thoughtful neighbors, quiet, well-kept, safe neighborhood with great schools and home value appreciation. In the instance of opposition to the proposed development, safety concerns are just part of our equation. Since the 7-Eleven store was built on the intersection of Crooks and Waddles, vehicle congestion has increased substantially. Vehicles turn in and out of 7-Eleven parking lot just a few yards from the light with little room to spare, causing back up to the point some vehicles lined up at the red light wait through the whole change sequence and have to wait through another red sequence before they can proceed. Adding the proposed townhomes just north of this intersection on Crooks is going to make the traffic congestion exponentially worse and potentially more dangerous. Green space has always been an important part of any new development in the city. We are losing far too much of this woodland set support the varied wildlife we are fortunate to have. Noise levels in our area continue to increase. Subject development would create loss of vegetation and its contribution to a clear air, loss of habitat of wildlife, increased water retention issues, and loss of natural beauty. There are some of the reasons we object strongly to this development. Other items of importance are the negative impact a development like this would have on value of our homes. A partial transient population, potential pedestrian access to our sub by town homeowners, renters, and their guests, invited and uninvited, as well as potential use of our streets for parking are just not acceptable and have very real possibility of bringing an increase of crime to our neighborhood via this additional access point. The design of the proposed development barely fits into such a small footprint and towers over our homes. Housing design, as well as proposed enclosure fencing, do not fit the architecture of homes in our sub as well as those surrounding. Allowing this venture to move forward as currently planned would potentially benefit the builder, developer, and yes, increase tax revenue for the city. However, would be detrimental of neighborhood, neighbors, and surrounding homes, subdivisions, and those needing to travel to and from Crooks, Waddles roads, especially during rush hours. Sincerely, James and Sharon Murray of 1267 Bradbury. Dear zoning commissioners, as a resident of the Woodlands of Troy subdivision for 30 years, I am requesting you once again deny approval of Crooks Road Townhomes that was submitted by Mr. Sapa for consideration this evening. I firmly believe that the 74 three-story townhomes crammed on that corner are far too many. It doesn't provide enough available space for children to play and vehicles to be parked without infringing on our subdivision. We moved to the city of Troy not only for schools, but because families were able to raise children in single-family homes with yards to play in, not a small plot in front of their house or in streets with high traffic volume. Townhouses are compatible with single-family two-story homes in our neighborhood. Oh, I'm sorry. Townhomes are not compatible with single-family two-story homes in our neighborhood. What the developer has proposed are houses, not homes for families. Townhomes are dwellings where people live, not a home where kids can safely play in the yard with our neighborhood kids and pets. I am asking the Planning Commission to return Troy to its roots, a city of homes and safe, kid-friendly neighborhoods. Please deny Mr. Sapa's request. Thank you. Patricia Boralowski, 1381 Bradbury Drive. To whom it may concern, we moved to the west side of Troy three years ago for a number of reasons, including the world-class schools and diversity, as well as the larger forests and green spaces. I object to the development of new townhome complexes at the corner of Crooks and Waddles, and I believe it will destroy the aesthetic and beauty of this area of Troy. Townhomes on that corner will not fit the rest of the single-family homes and green space forests in the area. It will stick out like a sore thumb. In addition, more residents on that corner will increase traffic congestion and cause more safety concerns for pedestrians and walkers. It also continues to destroy the wildlife habitats in the area, which is what sets this west side of Troy apart from other areas, even within Troy. Justin D. Souza of 1730 Chadon Drive. To whom it may concern, my family and I have been longtime residents of the city of Troy. We heard that the developer is appealing again after being denied the permission to build a 74-unit apartment complex in Crooks Road near Waddles in November. I would like to voice my objection to the proposed development and request that the appeal be denied again. We live in the surrounding community and have friends and families in the immediate vicinity. This large apartment complex crammed into a small area will permanently distort the look of our city, increase traffic, as well as noise pollution, and safety concerns to our community. I am strongly opposed to the proposed project. Thank you. E C A T E R I N A. Last name is C R E T U. No address noted. Respected Troy Zoning Board of Appeals officers, I am requesting to vote against requests from Toll Brook North LLC developer to construct townhomes or any mass residential units at suggested location 4095-4115 Crooks and property adjacent. Here are my reasons. One, lack of compatibility with surrounding. Two, traffic and safety hazard. Three, more construction and very little open space left in Troy. Thank you. Sanjay Shah of 123 Miles Millstone Drive. Hello, I am writing this email to oppose a proposed apartment complex development on Crooks Road. I live near this area, Chatwell Court, and drive by that road. I request that the appeal by the developer be denied, as this will not only change the complexion of the area for the worst, but would also encourage similar unsightly development in the surrounding neighborhoods and areas. Thank you. Thomas Kim of 4081 Chawak Court. City of Troy, my wife Shelley and I live at 1059 Fountain Drive in Troy with our six-year-old daughter. We purchased our home in the spring of 2019, and were drawn to the subdivision because of all the single-family homes with many children. We recently became aware of the proposed Crooks Road Townhome projects and are concerned about this project moving forward. Crooks Road Townhomes proposes to build 74 units and a three-story multifamily townhome in this small area just north of Waddles Road. The proposed densely populated development at this location will detrimentally change the character of our neighborhood. Many of our fellow neighbors expressed concerns in 2019 about this development moving forward, and we attended multiple Planning Commission meetings on this topic. The builder has shown a lack of responsiveness to our concerns in their revised plans. In fact, they've increased the original number of townhomes from 56 to 74. We, along with other citizens of Troy, respectfully request the city of Troy to deny this project and maintain the integrity of our neighborhood. Thank you for your service to the citizens of Troy. Please feel free to contact us. John and Shelley Shallcross. Dear Board members, regarding SP-1922 Crooks Road Townhouse Multifamily Development, please find attached my letter opposing the appeal of the above-mentioned development. As the member of the Board of Woodlands of Troy HOA, the adjoining subdivision to this proposed project, we want to be on record opposing this development and demand the Planning Commission ruling remain in place. Regards, Mike Lipinski. His letter states, Dear Board members, we have objected to the proposed development before the Planning Commission beginning over one year ago. After the initial hearing where the petitioner was given the opportunity to hear the concerns of the Planning Commission and community, subsequent hearing where the petitioner expanded the project and increased the intensity of the development. After hearing the concerns and objections of the community, the Planning Commissioners raised their own issues and suggested the petitioner to meet with the community. Representatives of the Woodlands Homeowners Association and neighbors had a couple of good dialogues with the petitioner and expressed their concerns and desire for the development in line with the zoning ordinance and included the specific concerns addressed below. The petitioner didn't address any of our major concerns and presented a final plan for site plan approval, which was rejected. We believe the Planning Commission's decision was sound, especially for the following reasons. The zoning of the site is neighborhood node site type B, which is transitional, smaller-scale, employment-based, mixed-use. Site type NN.B consolidates the smaller, diverse sites at and around nodes throughout the city. They are located both in support of NN.A. Sites are transitional areas between more intense nodes in the adjacent neighborhoods and on their own, covering an entire node. For those nodes identified in the master plan as less intense, smaller-scale nodes with a direct connection to a residential area. Further, site types B, sites may contain a variety of uses, including residential at-grade in a high-density I'm sorry, wait, I just jumped. In a high-density arrangement, but may also include small-scale retail and service or office uses. By definition, then, the range of uses go from duplexes at-grade to higher-density at-grade uses to small-scale retail and service uses. The proposed development doesn't qualify with these, with three-story townhouse use. The design standards for building orientation and entrance require that the primary entrance require the primary entrance. The primary building entrance shall be clearly identifiable and usable and located in the front facade parallel to the street. With the exception of the buildings fronting on Crooks, the building's primary entrance are not on the street. For this reason alone, the application must be denied. Further. I'm sorry, one moment. Further, NN Building Form C Lot Access and Circulation Standards states driveways must be integrated into buildings from the rear in an alley configuration. The current driveway access is only roadway access, and per the ordinance is supposed to be treated as an alley, not a street. It does include Table 5.03, 8.3. There are only two ways to interpret the definition of street. First includes only dedicated right-of-ways maintained by the city. The other includes private streets as well. If you only consider streets that are dedicated right-of-ways, the zoning ordinance, Section 5.06 E.1. A would prohibit the buildings that don't front on Crooks Road. If you consider private streets in the definition, then the above requirement of driveway and garage access requires streets be added for the front of buildings as the garages have to be in the rear. The design standards also require transitional features. Transitional features are architectural elements, site features, or alterations to buildings massing that are used to provide a transition between higher-density uses and low- or moderate-density residential areas. As provided in the description of uses, in type B and N transitional features would include the required at-grade residential, which is not provided in this plan. Further, three-story, six-unit residential structures totaling 74 units provides no transition in building massing. The Form-B standards set minimums and maximums dimensional requirements for neighborhood notes. Just because a plan falls within dimensional range doesn't mean it complies with the zoning ordinance. For the reasons stated above and those provided by the Planning Commission resolution, denying the application with respect, request you deny the petitioner's appeal. Mike Lipinski, Vice President of the Woodlands of Troy HOA. One moment. I have one other that I have to read, and then I can play some. One moment, please. My apologies. Okay. Okay. These are some that are pre-recorded. I have one other that I have to read myself that I'm going to look for. From Laura Lipinski. I'm gonna look for that while you listen to these.
Focusing on making developers rich and increasing the population in an already overpopulated suburb, I suggest that Troy focuses on preserving air quality, preserving green space, not increasing the already crazy traffic, and preserving what little quality of life Troy still has after decades of uncontrolled bulldozing of everything from tharland to forest. There is no reason why a two-acre parcel cannot remain as a single-family dwelling or two-home site. There are many communities which require large plots of land for each home, .5 to 1 acres. A beautiful piece of property like that should stay the way it is and has been for decades. As awful as the apartments are at Liverneys South of 15, at least that is on land that was already destroyed by development long ago. Save these types of projects for land like that, not pristine, trade-acced with a river. Global warming is a top concern for most people on this planet, and even small communities like Troy can help by no longer allowing the clear cutting of trees and high-density building. I can't imagine that you would find many citizens who would want more of this type of housing in Troy. Our world is at a reckoning. We can keep developing the way we always have, and we will continue to see the increases in temperature, increases in natural disasters, and increased demand of natural resources that is no longer sustainable, or we can cease greedy development, preserve what little is left, and work to find ways to decrease the demand of the natural resources of our world. Sincerely, Deanna Atrom. I would like to vote against this project. I feel that these townhouses are not the right fit for the neighborhood and have concerns with the hazards and safeties of the surrounding residents. Adding these townhomes to the area could cause major issues with traffic and congestion to our already busy streets, which brings me concern for the health and safety of our residents who like to run, walk, and bike these streets around this area. I vote no to approve this project. Thanks. William Diarmid, 4209 Cypress Drive. Good afternoon. I am writing to you to respectfully deny the Crooks Road
Good afternoon. I am writing to you to respectfully deny the Crooks Road Town Homes project. I live at 1395 Fountain Drive. I am located a block north of Waddles off of Crooks. I am very concerned about having very dense housing built so close to single-family homes. I have a very young family and they ride their bikes around. This area already has increased traffic. I am extremely concerned for their safety with adding more congestion and potentially more distracted drivers. There is also a lack of transition between single-family houses to this project. Our school district is already bursting at the seams, so if we add dense housing, it will just add to the problem. My wife and I work hard to live in a nice neighborhood. I am concerned if we add these townhomes in, what will do to our property value? Cheaper to live in the area, increased traffic, less green space, etc. Thank you for taking the time to read my email and voice our objection to this project. Stay safe and have a nice day. Zach and Sarah Reed, 1395 Fountain Drive.
Dear zoning board members, my wife and I write to oppose the appeal of Toll Brook North LLC concerning the planning commission's denial of the preliminary site plan for its Crooks Road Town Homes project at 4095 to 4115 Crooks Road. We support the denial of the planning commission and ask you to affirm that denial. The denial was unanimous, but for one vote, that should be broadly. We understand that the lone member voting for the project had received a sizable political donation from the developer. He had voluntarily recused himself because of his conflict of interest, like he should have. The vote would have been unanimous. There is no need to get down into the weeds of interpreting site types, street types, and design standards, vague though many of them may be, because the proposed project quite obviously does not even come close to meeting the threshold intent of the neighborhood nodes district set forth in Section 5.06A of the Troy Zoning Ordinance. This development will play no role in enhancing the quality of life and the continued viability of the city, of the city. Rather, it will cheapen the quality of life and diminish the viability of the neighborhood and the city, and it will ultimately decrease the city's property tax base as a decrease in hundreds of single resident values far outpaces any value of this three-lot monstrosity. It does not at all respect the adjacent neighborhoods of single-family residents. It changes things for the worse. Multi-family design so close to the sidewalk and street utterly destroys the current single-family residential beauty of this stretch of Crooks Road. Look at the two large beautiful homes just to the north or the new large homes to the south of Bullen Cemetery. Approval of this ugly multifamily project would be an insult to them and the adjoining residential subdivisions for which citizens have spent large amounts of money to improve. Contrary to the intent of 5.06A, it will visually overpower the residential areas adjacent to it. In its efforts to milk as much money out of the land as possible, this crowded development encroaches not only on the residential setbacks along Crooks Road, but also the slopes and beauty of the land drain with its ugly barrier to contain added earth. At the commission hearing, an adjoining neighbor showed videos of the current wetland impact of land drain in this area. I wonder why the MDEQ hasn't jumped all over this development. Commercial development of this sorts destroys the current park-like beauty of the land drain that exists in three quadrants of this neighborhood known, which node we submit has become obsolete given all the recent intensification of commercial development along nearby Vickiever Road. This development will not play a critical role in the protection and cultivation of a high quality of life in Troy. Rather, it will greatly diminish it. We are one of the most diverse communities in Michigan with the reputation of being one of the most desirable, peaceful, and upscale communities in Michigan, with some of the best schools in Michigan. Let's keep it that way. Thomas E. and Patricia Reese, 1400 Bradbury Drive.
Good evening, Commissioners. I believe the planning commission's decision was sound, especially for the following reasons. The zoning of the site is neighborhood node Site Type B, which in Section 5.06B.3.B describes the permitted use as transitional, smaller-scale, employment-based, mixed-use. Site type NN.B consolidates the smaller, diverse sites at and around nodes throughout the city. They are located both in support of NN.A sites as transitional areas between more intense nodes and the adjacent neighborhoods and on their own covering an entire node for those nodes identified in the master plan as less intense, smaller-scale nodes with a direct connection to a residential area. Further, it states Type B, sites may contain a variety of uses, including residential at-grade and higher-density arrangement, but may also include small-scale retail and service or office uses. By definition then, the range of uses go from residence like duplexes or bungalow court at grade to higher-density at-grade uses to small-scale retail and service uses. The proposed development doesn't qualify with three-story townhouse uses. The design standards in Section 5.06E.1.A for the building orientation and entrance require the primary entrance. The primary building entrance shall be clearly identifiable and usable and located in the front facade parallel to the street. With the exception of the buildings fronting on Crooks Road, the building's primary entrance are not on a street. Further, NN Building, Section 5.03.B.3. Form C Lot Access and Circulation Standards states driveways must be integrated into buildings from the rear in an alley configuration. The current driveway access is the only roadway access and per the ordinance is supposed to be treated as an alley and does not qualify as a street for the purpose of a primary entrance. For this additional reason, the application must be denied. The zoning ordinance's purpose is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community, but the proposed development not in conformance with the zoning ordinance, it is a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the community and must be changed to comply. Respectfully submitted, Tracy Roush, 4187 Penrose Drive.
Troy Zoning Board of Appeals, I am writing to express my strong opposition to the Crooks Road Town Home development. While the plans might technically fit the neighborhood node designation for this site, they absolutely do not provide appropriate transition to the immediate surrounding Willands and Maryhill acre subdivisions. My major concerns are as follows. Thirteen buildings with 74 units is significantly more dense as compared to neighboring subdivisions. Must significantly reduce density. Three-story buildings do not fit as compared to neighboring subdivisions, limit height to two stories. The large buildings are too close to existing homes. Must significantly increase setbacks and create more buffer trees and landscapes. Regards, Matt ERDEY, 1928 Warbler Court.
Hello, members of the zoning board of appeals. I would humbly request to deny this project in view of: 1. Safety secondary to traffic congestion due to absence of transition to and from this project, the lack of compatibility with surrounding projects; 2. Overburdening of our schools; 3. Decrease in surrounding property values. Thank you for your consideration. Regards, PAV Kapoor, 1228 Rothwell Drive.
Dear Madam or Sir, I am a homeowner in the subdivision west of Crooks and north of Waddles, 1425 Bradbury. It is my understanding that the developer of the Crooks Road Town House project is appealing the decision of the Troy Planning Commission to not permit the development of this project. I am a homeowner of the nearby subdivision, and I am sure you would agree the additional vehicle traffic congestion, school crowded, and commercialization this project poses to my property, which is in close proximity to me, is not desirable. Please do not approve this appeal by the developer and uphold Troy as a desirable community to reside in that balances commercial and homeowner property locations and does not place commercial properties in the middle of suburban properties. Sincerely, David Rusing, 1425 Bradbury.
All of the reasons stated below in the continued position contesting the Crooks Road Town House development still stand. In addition, the apartment complex that was occurred on Wilds east of the 711, that crowded Wilds and Crooks will negatively impact our traffic and congestion problems. Adding this development, which has been actively contested by Troy residents for over a year, will make our daily lives a nightmare. What does it take to resolve this issue with a final meltdown? Karen Shaw, 4040 Glen Castle Drive.
Dear members of the Planning Commission and zoning boards of appeals, I live in Carson Drive, merely adjacent to the Paulus Town Homes development. I recently purchased the property and moved in with my family. I was excited to be part of this beautiful neighborhood with great neighbors. However, I was saddened, angered, and appalled when I heard that a developer wants to build a massive 74-unit townhomes right next to my home and is appealing the previous decision by the commission in November to deny the commission to build it. I review the proposal. I am against it because of the following reasons. 1. Infringement on our privacy. Designed the proposed complex shows the multiple units of the townhomes apartments with balconies directly overlooking my home. Many people can see through the windows in my living room, dining room, and master bedroom facing that side. I currently have complete privacy in my home. However, this development is going to change forever. The proposed ten-foot of greenery is not nearly enough. 2. Safety concerns. With this new complex, anyone can freely walk within feet of my property. Though the developer has proposed eight-foot tall fencing, I am not reassured. I have two young kids. I am greatly concerned about my family's safety. 3. Natural beauty. Beauty. Currently, the area offers a stunning view of wooded area, which is calm, relaxing, and peaceful. This large-scale development will destroy the natural beauty of the area. 4. Compatibility with surrounding homes. The proposed townhomes are not compatible in terms of design with the homes in the surrounding subdivisions. This will permanently alter the look of our community for the worse. 5. Overcrowding and congestion. Having a large number of people in a small area will increase overcrowding and congestion, both in terms of street traffic and foot traffic, and also potentially increase noise pollution in the whole area. 6. Property value. I would have hesitated to purchase this property if I knew I would be living next to this large complex with privacy and safety concerns. Neighbors in Carson Drive share similar concerns and some are considering leaving if this goes through. Daily, I am considering the same if our pleas are disregarded. Values of our properties and subdivision will go down with this development. I would like to thank and appreciate the members of the commission for standing with the local community and denying the commission for the complex. I request you to stand firm in your previous decision and do the same this time as well. I want to appeal to the developer to consider developing single-family homes similar in design to what we have in the surrounding area or make significant alterations to the design layout to address our concerns. If you can, please use your power and wealth to enhance our community, not to destroy what has taken decades to build. Respectfully, DILIP KHANALMD.
To the zoning board appeal, good evening. First and foremost, I can't believe that our city elected officials are pursuing this discussion in the middle of a pandemic. You can't expect a meaningful dialogue on this issue while the city residents are focused on keeping their jobs and staying safe. Are you trying to rush this while we are all sitting at home worrying about our health, safety, and jobs? I have lived in Troy for more than 30 years, and I lived on both the east and west side of the city. I love the city, but I am finding it harder and harder to justify the actions of both the city council and the planning department. I live off of Crooks, north of Waddles, and I do oppose the new proposed townhomes and the continued overdevelopment of our city. All of our new development that took place on Crooks in the last five years created havoc on our traffic and the quality of our lives in this beautiful city. Not only is it hard just to get on and off Crooks, but the noise level continues to increase. I feel like the city council has started to overreach its authority and has not effectively managed our beloved city. It used to be a better community, but not anymore. We used to have quiet neighborhoods, but not anymore. We used to have less accidents, traffic, and rain, but not anymore. This new project is going to add more stress to an already saturated infrastructure. We, as a community, need to take the time to rethink how we want to continue fostering the growth of our city without having to continue building in an already rapidly filling area. If we continue this path, the future of our city does not look good. If the developer was living in my neighborhood, I would bet that his actions would be different than what he is trying to do. I do not think he will jeopardize the safety and quality of his life and his family that he is attempting to do for us. My question is, what are you doing to my city? Stop this madness, Fred. T E R A D I. 4388 Co.
Dear members of the Planning Commission and zoning board of appeals, I live very close to the proposed apartment complex development. I am greatly concerned about this project. For many years, this area has been a beautiful suburban community of single-family homes surrounded by natural beauty and great people. The proposed complex would change the overall appearance of the whole community. It's not just the traffic congestion and the looks. I am also concerned about the safety for my family and community with the high turnover of all sorts of people this massive 74-unit complex will bring. I appeal to the developer to reconsider and change the plan. Sincerely, Fidel.
Dear Troy Planning Commission members, I am Sarita Kumari, resident at 4215 Carson Drive, Troy. I strongly oppose Crooks Road Town Homes development on the corner of Crooks and Waddles as I have some serious concern as mentioned below. 1. These apartments are going to overcrow the area, which impacts quality of life of Troy residents. 2. Peak hours traffic is already painful, and with these apartments in place, Crook and Waddles traffic would be worse, causing more accidents and delays to offices, schools, reaching out to hospitals, etc. 3. It would be hard for school to maintain quality of education, which is the reason we have invested in our property for or in paying high taxes. 4. Troy would not be green as it is today. There wouldn't be spaces left for kids, elderly citizens to enjoy outdoor time safely. I have many more reasons to oppose this development but cannot write all. Hence, please do not approve this development. Thanks. In regards, Sarita Kumari.
Dear members, I recently received a letter from the city of Troy regarding an appeal for townhouse development in Crooks Road by the developer that will happen today. On further research, I was shocked to find out that this is actually adjacent to our property. I am worried that putting such a large complex will infringe upon our privacy and safety as the proposed buffer zone is very narrow. This is a family-friendly neighborhood with young families with children and strong bonds with each other. When we purchased the property, the privacy, safety, and quietness of the dead-end street is what appealed to us the most. This development would change that. A large number of apartments will also cause high turnover of the residents who may not have as much interest in maintaining the local community nature property values as we local property owners do. Multiple apartments with balconies very close to and directly overlooking my home freaks me out. Please do not let this go through. Sincerely, Bushiko Nito, MD, Carson Drive, Neighbour.
Troy Zoning Board of Appeals, I am writing to express my strong opposition to the Crooks Road Town Home development. While the plans presented might technically fit the neighborhood node designation for the site, they absolutely do not provide appropriate transition to the immediately surrounding Willands and Maryhill acre subdivisions. My major concerns are as follows. Thirteen buildings with 74 units is significantly more dense as compared to the neighboring subdivisions. Must significantly reduce density. Three-story buildings do not fit as compared to the neighboring subdivisions, limit height to two stories. The large buildings are too close to existing homes. Must significantly increase setbacks and create more buffer trees, plants, etc. Thank you. Kit M A S T R O B E R T O, 4197 Carson Drive.
City of Troy Zoning Board, I humbly object the approval of 74 townhomes on Crooks Road as it affects our neighborhood ambiance and traffic is diverted through our peaceful Woodlands neighborhood. I humbly request not to approve this project. Thank you. T A Y A T H R I. T O D A L A K U R.
T A Y A T H R I, T O D A L A K U R, four zero two zero Penrose Court. Dear Troy ZBA representatives, as a homeowner in the Maryell Acres subdivision in Troy for the past thirty-six years, I am strongly against the Crooks Road Town Homes project. This project is totally out of character for an area that is primarily single-family homes. This high-density project lacks green space and gas parking, to name just a few of its drawbacks. It will definitely have a negative effect on the value of the homes in the area. Please do the right thing and unanimously reject the project. Sincerely, Adamin J A S K U L K A, four two nine one Lee I Drive. Dear members of the Planning Commission, I am ready to support the prior Planning and Zoning Commission decisions about denying the development of the unit apartment complex in Crooks Road near Waddles. And I would like to request the same be done again. The area has single-family homes, and such development has lack of transition compatibility with surrounding neighborhood. Furthermore, I think there are many concerns with the health, safety, and welfare of our community. This development would be approved. Sincerely, Vortusco, The Villa, three one eight three McClure. This is Hong Sun Kim, homeowner of four zero seven four Parkstone Court. I strongly disagree with Crooks Road Town Homes proposal. The townhomes are built. It will cause many problems and inconveniences such as traffic are bound to appear, and more students won't help the schools because T S D is over the student limit currently. Thank you. Best regards, Hong Sun Kim. For the zoning board of appeals and planning commission, I'm ready to voice my concerns with the Crooks Road Town Home Development Plan and strongly opposes development. The seventy-four unit development comprised of thirteen three-story buildings on the property is not the right fit for the site. I hope that a compromise can be reached and what will be developed. However, I have serious concerns about the possibility, as this is the fourth time the plan is being brought to the city with very little change, please consider. Significantly fewer units and buildings. My estimation based on the plans is that the density proposed for this development is five times greater than the immediately surrounding Woodlands and Maryell Acres subdivisions. Neighborhood node designation does not mean cram as much as possible into a space. It should fit with a surrounding neighborhood. The five times density difference is much too high. In my opinion, this needs to be reduced by sixty percent at a minimum. Keeping anything built on this site to a maximum of two stories, this would be a better fit with the immediately surrounding neighborhoods of Woodlands and Maryell Acres. Frankly, even the office buildings in the seven eleven on the southeast corner are shorter than three stories. Three-story buildings do not fit at this location period. Acquiring major improvements on transitional features, significantly more setbacks is needed from existing homes that border that property. Keeping more trees as a buffer to the existing adjacent homes on Carson and Penrose. Preserving more of the trees and woodland habitat in general, incorporating more space. Enclosing these plans need a major overhaul. While the neighborhood node permits multiple family residential housing, this particular plan is not the right to multiple housing, family housing for the location. The plan is too dense, and the buildings are too tall. There is not appropriate transition to the immediately surrounding neighborhoods. I also urge you to consider the hundreds of emails and voicemails sent in opposition the past three times this development plan had been brought to the city. Thank you for your listening to my thoughts and concerns. Christie Roncelli, four one nine seven Carson Drive, formerly fourteen forty-nine Fountain Drive. Hello, I reside at twelve twelve Rothwell in Troy. This is in the vicinity of Crooks and Waddles. I oppose the proposal to construct townhouses at Crooks and Waddles. There are residential neighborhoods in that district area. A townhouse development is going to change things. Troy has become a city instead of a neighborhood. Big townhouses and apartment complexes do not belong in the backyards of homes. Rental properties are also for those of lower income that may not be able to afford their home. This puts the community where increased poverty and crime. Not to mention the added congestion and traffic. I do not want to live in a city with huge developments like this in my backyard. If I wanted that, I would move to Troy. I want a neighborhood. These are very different. It takes away our neighborhood feel. This will also likely decrease our property values. I have small children. I truly do not want this to in my backyard and would consider moving out of Troy if my sense of neighborhood security and community, if mine's taken from me. Respectfully submitted, Becky McInnes.
Uh, City of Troy Zoning Board of Appeals, regarding variance request. Okay. The letter from the Woodlands of Troy HOA argues correctly that there are areas of noncompliance with current zoning ordinances. I would like to add to that argument. The petitioner has argued that the only bar they must meet is zoning regulations. Even if we assume that they do meet these requirements, and we have shown that they do not, they still need to meet the requirements of the Troy Master Plan. Master Plan has been used consistently as the bar to decide site plan approvals. The Planning Commission has been entrusted to use the facts and spirit of that plan to approve or deny projects. There are compatibility and transition guidelines laid out in the master plan, and this submission does not comply with either. The petitioner has based their appeal on section fifteen point oh four, subjections B and C. They have argued that the Planning Commission's decision was arbitrary and capricious. The Planning Commission's decision was not arbitrary or capricious. It was based on their interpretation of the master plans and the fact that there were zoning compliance issues that the petitioner has refused to address throughout the approval process. The petitioner is entitled to their opinion, but not their own facts. The facts of this appeal are simple. A, there are zoning noncompliance issues with the plan that was denied. B, there are compatibility and transition issues with the surrounding community as detailed on the master plan. C, the Planning Commission has discretion to interpret the master plan, and that interpretation does not automatically amount to arbitrary or capricious actions. Section fifteen point oh four subsection C point four states, "The zoning board of appeals shall only modify or reverse an administrative decision being appealed if one or more of the following requirements are met: A, the administrative decision was arbitrary or capricious; B, the administrative decision was based on erroneous finding of material fact; C, the administrative decision constituted an abuse of discretion; or D, the administrative decision was based on erroneous interpretation of the zoning ordinance or zoning law." Let's address these one by one. A, the administrative decision was not arbitrary or capricious. The decision was in line with the rules and spirit of the master plan and with current zoning laws. B, there were no errors of finding of material fact. The decision took into account the compatibility and transition aspects of the master plan to determine that the submission was not aligned with either. C, the decision was well within the scope and authority of the Planning Commission charter. There was no abuse of discretion. D, as stated above, just because something fits is a zoning requirement that does not guarantee a fit with the rules and spirit of the master plan. Both criteria must be met, and in case, and then in this case, the submission being appealed did not align with the master plan and failed to meet all zoning requirements, and as such was properly denied. Based on the facts provided above, I request that this board deny the appeal sincerely. Laura Lipinski of four two three three Carson Drive. This concludes the reading of emails, and now there are voicemails.
Hello, my name is Gene Stein, and I'm calling in grave opposition against the rezoning of the property at seventeen and Crooks, uh, the northwest corner. Thank you.
Hello, um, my name is Sandra Jagurski Magnus. I live in Washington Square, and I am calling to say that we are definitely, definitely against that Crooks and Waddles project, and the reason being, I don't know if you know how many cars are there every day. Um, it's just, it can't go. This is terrible. I mean, you gotta figure, there's cars there all the time. And now there aren't that many people working, but there's still a lot of cars and a lot of trucks. And I've lived here, like I said, fifty years. I've never seen anything like this. Our city has become cement city. It's ridiculous. Every time somebody sells, or there's something going up, I mean, our city is just ruined. Anyway, I just wanted to come.
Hello, this is Jignia Shah calling. I am calling from Troy, Michigan. Uh, my address is four zero eight eight Parkstone Court. I am calling regarding the Crooks Road Town Home Project Appeal. I strongly oppose this project. Please reject the appeal as we have already brought our concerns. Many of the Troy citizens have brought the concerns to the Planning Commission twice before we have attended the meeting in person in the past, and also uh, when they had a virtual hearing by the Planning Commission. We have multiple concerns. This development is not going to be compatible with the surrounding area. It is not in harmony with the house it's surrounded. It is going to affect the green space, environment, wildlife, the buildings that they are talking about making those townhomes are not uh, children-friendly. There is no parking space. It is going to affect the Troy city so much. Please reject the appeal.
Yes, I'm calling regarding my opposition to the proposed Tollbrook Development at Crooks and Waddles. My name is Henry Bizich, last name spelled B as in boy, Z as in zebra, D as in dog, Z as in zebra, I U C H. My address is twenty-three thirty-seven Valley View Drive. This project has been rejected once already. I, the developers, appealing the decision to the zoning board. My opposition to that is it's an extremely busy corner. There's a ton of traffic there. It's less than a mile away from Big Beaver, which is also an extremely busy area. It would detract from whatever the neighborhoods within the surrounding area, and it would just increase the traffic flow tremendously. So I hope that the zoning board will see fit to deny the developers' plan to add any more building townhouses in that particular area. Thank you very much. Bye now.
Yeah, this is Hinasha from seventeen oh one Caliper Drive in Troy, and I reject the uh, the zoning meeting tomorrow, so I am not in favor of that nomination. So my voting is no.
Hi, my name is John Bridge, and I reside at four oh eight nine Penrose Court in Troy. Our neighborhood, Woodlands of Troy, is immediately adjacent to the proposed development uh, at, for the Crooks Road Townhouse Project. Uh, I believe that the City of Troy Planning Commission made the correct decision in denying the site plan, and I implore the commission to once again reaffirm that declination for primarily three very important reasons. Traffic, parking, and safety issues, green space and parking issues, and storm drain and animal dislocation. Um, yeah, I strongly believe the commission has the responsibility to maintain the beauty, the safety, and the ecology of our Troy community, and I think this proposal is uh, totally inconsistent with all three of those long-held Troy values, and um, it should be clearly and summarily and completely rejected. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, this is Dr. Ashit Shah. Leaving my comments for zoning board appeals for the scheduled meeting tomorrow, January nineteenth, regarding Crooks Road Townhouses. My address is four zero eight eight Parkstone Court, Troy, Michigan. I live in the property on the vicinity of the proposed development. I strongly have opposed it before, and I have also attended previous meetings of the Planning Commission in person for virtual events, which was the last one in November. I believe the Planning Commission has rejected this proposal for the right reason, and there is nothing that the developer has brought to bear that suggests that that decision was anywhere wrong. Please uphold that decision and reject this proposal outright and permanently. Thank you.
Uh, hello, my name is Joe Fico, F like friendly, F E K O. I live at nine one seven Durham Court, about a half a mile from the Crooks Road Townhouse Project, uh, consideration at, um, Crooks Road and Waddles. Uh, I'd like to, uh, comment on my opposition to high-rise buildings in that location. I believe that they would not be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, uh, which I am nearby. The, uh, only high-rise buildings in this area are located near sixteen and eighteen mile roads. Also, I'm concerned about traffic safety issues that could potentially arise due to the, um, the population density that the townhouses would afford. The intersection already is, is, um, quite congested at times. Thank you very much for allowing me to make comments.
Hi, zoning board, I would like to express that I am against uh, more townhouses and apartments being built on every corner in Troy. The, um, apartments that were built at the edges of the center drive are just ugly. And it's not, uh, appealing at all in Troy that every corner should have a townhouse or apartment building. It's just, uh, bad planning. And I don't think it adds anything to, um, uh, the neighborhood for low-house, low-income housing. Uh, it does not, uh, add any value to people who own houses and pay taxes already in Troy. So I'm definitely against that. Thank you.
I'm calling with regard to the, uh, Crooks Road Town Home Project that's wanting to build on the corners of Crooks and Waddles. I oppose this building immensely. I said, I live at Waddles in Liverny, and traffic is already unbearable. And during rush hour, it's impossible to get out of our subdivision now. Putting a townhome complex on that corner along with seven eleven is just going to put too much traffic at that intersection, making it extremely dangerous. And, uh, it's just, it's just not a good thing. Troy has enough townhomes being built. Stop this proposal. I do not agree with it. It's just causing too much congestion in a bad area. Uh, consider the residents that already live here. You're making life difficult for everyone. Thank you.
This is, um, Anthony in T. A. and John Clokino. We live at four one nine eight Carson Drive, right next to the construction site, um, for the Ca- Crooks Road Town Homes Project. I'm calling right now on behalf of my family to register the disapproval of this proposal on Crooks Road. And I want to really appeal to the zoning board of appeals commissioners to really consider our disapproval. to really consider our disapproval of this proposal. The construction of seventy-four, seventy-four three-story townhomes is definitely not suited to a family-established community now present in the area. This is our twenty-seventh year living at four one nine eight Carson Drive. Actually, it's twenty-eight. It's moved in nineteen ninety-three. And the choice of this location was purposeful. We selected it because of the many advantages afforded senior family homes in the area. So the addition of seventy-four three-story units, according to the proposal, complicate our life congestion and traffic mayhem. I can easily see an addition of another hundred or two hundred vehicles in the area that will make our lives very problematic. So I really want to register this concern and it's very important to me and my family living at four one nine eight Carson, just next to where the construction is gonna be and they're gonna be looking over houses, that the commissioners, we appeal to you that you consider it. Please refrain from putting this plan in question because the increase of seventy-three, that's a hundred and fifty to two hundred people in the area, will actually destroy this one peaceful and enviable neighborhood. Thank you so much for your very serious consideration of our appeal and disapproval of the Crooks Town Home Project.
Hello, I am calling to, I want the council to reject the, or the zoning board of appeals to reject the Toll Brook condo or developer thing that's going on at Waddles and Crooks. There's not enough room there that is just stupid and it's gonna lower everybody's property value. It shouldn't be there. It's been rejected. It's like it's a full-time job now to just keep calling and complaining and stuff saying, "We don't want this." I think it's about time they listen to the people and give up on it. We don't want it.
That concludes the public comment.
Any other public comment at this time? Not, I will close out the public comment portion of our meeting, bring it back to the board for discussion, inquiries of city staff, potentially the petitioner by a board member, or possible action. I know it's twenty-two eleven, is that right? Gosh, where did the time go?
You're right.
If someone needs to take a restroom break, you don't have to wait for a break. But I encourage everyone to go quickly, as long as we have four, we have quorum. But we can take a break if that's the consensus. All right, Mr. Eisenbacher wanted to be recognized. Please.
Microphone. Okay, that was a lot. I'd like to share some thought process and I'd like to get some feedback from the other board members and city attorneys and Mr. Evans about where this thought process is going. So we've received lots of information, lots of information for review tonight, much more than is normal. And tonight is much more judicial than our normal meetings. We're asking to be judges this time, which is weird. And I was curious about this property because a lot of people were talking about the green space. So I did a quick look up on the public records at Bureau of Land Management and it turns out that Representatives Andrew Jackson, Andrew Jackson, the guy on the twenty-dollar bill, transferred this property out of the public domain on the fifteenth of October, eighteen thirty-five. So we're close to two hundred years that this has been private property. And then I looked on the city's aerial for the property and the photography as recently as nineteen sixty-three showed it as being farmland. And so it's not pristine green space. It was farmland. It's just grown back to look like it's green space. And I just, I keep thinking about how the city's rules for land use is our zoning ordinance. It's private property, privately owned. It's not government property and the petitioner has to follow the rules of the zoning ordinance. But having said that, personally, I'm not comfortable taking the place of the Planning Commission. We're here to review, and it seems we're here to review more the decision process than the project itself. Going through all the details of the project and trying to figure out the site plan, the traffic, the parking, the flooding, the wetlands, and the thousands of other details that our professional city staff and the planning commissioner are charged with seems to be outside of ZBA domain. And personally, I don't feel there's enough knowledge for us to overstep the Planning Commission in this process. But I also feel very strongly that the Planning Commission needs to redo the resolution and have thorough reasons for denial or replace it with a resolution to approve. And then I think about what powers the ZBA has in this process and our memos from the city attorney and her staff show us that we can modify, we can reject, we can change. So personally, what I'm thinking is a resolution that the zoning board of appeals modifies the Planning Commission resolution to set it aside and to send this back to them, back to the Planning Commission to provide a more thorough and detailed resolution regarding the project. So that's what I'm thinking. I'm curious what my colleagues are thinking and staff.
Are you gonna make a specific?
Not yet.
Were you? Okay.
I don't have any specific inquiries because this is new to us. We haven't been in as much of a judicial position on these kind of matters reviewing the actions of another board and committee within the city of Troy. We've had to review staff decisions and they put forth both sides of the case. This one, we've been given the evidence that was written out, but we haven't been given necessarily the thought process. We didn't have the Planning Commission come to us and explain to us what they were thinking like we had in the past when the staff decisions and actions were under review. So I yield.
Mr. Green.
Broadly speaking, I agree with Mr. Eisenbacher. I do not believe that the Planning Commission made a decision on the basis of erroneous findings. I don't think it was an abuse of discretion. I don't think that it was an erroneous interpretation of the zoning or rather, I can't rule on that one to my own satisfaction. The first one, though, I don't know if it was arbitrary or capricious, but I could definitely see from what we have in front of us that there is an absence of material in front of us from the Planning Commission from which to make an appropriate judgment, in my opinion. We're looking at what we have on paper, as Mr. O'Blay said, not all the hundreds or whatever of public comment or previous opinions or anything else. We're looking at this decision and it's not there. I would support something essentially saying, kicking it back and saying, "We're not saying this project is approved. We're saying you need to provide, if you're gonna deny it, you need to deny it with cause." There has to be an opinion backing this decision.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Vice Chairman Bosenbrook.
Okay, I have three comments. Let me just make sure I touch on them. Three thoughts. The first is, I'm not opposed to what Mr. Eisenbacher is saying. Well, let me, so the one thing I would say is, I see there's reasons why the Planning Commission denied the site plan. And based on what I've seen from the petitioner and what I've seen from the record, I'm just not really persuaded that the first reason compatibility is a valid one. I think that's just a straight misreading of the zoning ordinance by the Planning Commission. I'm persuaded by the petitioner's argument on that. So from my own perspective, I'm looking more towards the basis, this transition argument. And I'm kind of skeptical. I'm not really sure what the real basis was. I did take some time to listen to most of, although not all, but at least the dialogue from November the tenth of twenty twenty of the Planning Commission. And it was hard to follow the arguments and the discussion in terms of, it seemed as if some of the members were on the verge of articulating some facts or some basis and they never got around to it because they felt rushed or they were trying to just move because they had been there for four or five hours. And then they were kind of sidetracked with some other issues regarding safety and so forth. So I think that perhaps there's something that they needed, they wanted to get to, but they didn't get there because they were trying to wrap up some sort of decision. And I would like to give them the opportunity to say, "Okay, if it's a transition issue, what is it?" And then if there's still an issue, we can have something to look at and compare it to in the record. And I guess the last thing I want to say is, listening to all of the concerns from the residents and also some of the concerns from the Planning Commission members, I think this raises a larger question that I don't know it's entirely, as Mr. Eisenbacher says, we're sort of sitting in a weird position of being an appellate body sort of judging trial court decisions. Some ways, it's not really comfortable for us. A lot of this argument and this concern, I feel like, is not something in our wheelhouse. This is something that perhaps is a larger question for the city council or for the overall, you know, direction of the city. It seems more like, petitioner makes a compelling case in some way, trying to follow the rules and the rules allow a lot of what they're asking for. And if there's this overarching question or concern about, you know, we don't like this sort of approach or this sort of direction of the city, that's not necessarily, you know, we're sitting here in a very narrow question. It's not really our ability to consider all these other sweeping questions. And related to that, I was listening, again, going back to the November hearing, these questions of safety and traffic, which are all valid concerns. Our city representative, I can't remember his name, I apologize. He made the point that this plan wouldn't have gotten to this point. There was a traffic study. It was final. It did indicate that there was, you know, there weren't overarching traffic concerns. I'm not doubting the perception of these residents. I'm just saying there was a traffic study. There were some, you know, engineering reports done. And so they took it to the point of where we are now and, you know, city staff did indicate that they thought it was a safe project in terms of the overarching question. So having said all of that, I am amenable to giving the Planning Commission perhaps some direct guidance or some direct, to give us something more to go on than kind of what they had in their resolution. So those are my thoughts at this point.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Bosenbrook. Another member. We'll come back to you, Mr. Green, a little bit. Is there another member who hasn't spoken yet? Mr. McCollough.
I'll follow Mr. Green.
Is there somebody who hasn't spoken that would like to speak first? Okay, I'll take a moment. I'll just say, yeah, this is different. I've been on this board for too many years to count and I don't remember ever considering an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision. And so this is new, uncharted territory. I know I've spoken to city staff before this meeting and asked a lot of questions and received a lot of good information. So I appreciate everyone who had some information to share, both before this meeting and tonight. Part of me believes that that a governmental body has authority in a particular area because it was well thought out, that they had discretionary powers to move forward in that particular area. That's why I said in the first item five A tonight, "We have the power. We have the zoning ordinance. Let's get the party going here as far as making our decision. If that changes in the future, it changes." So I do believe that the Planning Commission has the discretionary power to have made their decision before tonight's meeting at their last, or the meeting that they met at. So that's on one side of my brain. On the other side of my brain, looking at, you know, there's that old scenario, good, better, and best. You know, every decision that you make or a body makes, there could be a best scenario or something slightly less perfect, a better scenario, and then sometimes, in general, a good scenario. Like kicking this back to the Planning Commission, several members have used those words. Is it bad? I don't think it really is bad to have them put into words. Now, clearly, we have the authority here to overturn their decision. But would more input from them be helpful? Sure. And yeah, after hearing that they've met for five hours and we, look at us. We've been meeting for quite some time, but not nearly as that long. That information would be helpful, maybe from commissioners that were taxed out, maxed out from hours of deliberation and input and conversation. So I guess I'm open to hearing a resolution before I commit a vote. But at the end of the day, I do believe that the commission has the right to do what they've done. And I'll hear from other colleagues at this point to see where there might be perspective of perhaps crafting a resolution to kindly request of the commission more information. Mr. McCollough.
I'm gonna make mine as quick as possible here. When I went through this, and I'm going through and reading our ordinances regarding site type N N B, and when I read that, I hear that it's supposed to be a transitional area between more intense nodes, adjacent neighborhoods, that type of thing, smaller scale with direct connection. Then I read our N N A, which talks about basically that Then I read our NNA, which talks about basically that it is, um, and it includes in there, they often incorporate high density residential, upper floors when possible. When I, I read those types of things in there, I, I say, I feel like that the, the Planning Commission used their discretion appropriately. I think that they looked at it and said, I don't believe that this is, um, a transitional development. Um, I don't believe it's tiered. I think it's more intense than what the ordinances allow for that area. So I can see where they came from. And, um, I look at us as one step in the process of where there, where this might go next. So I look at it that this, this, this isn't us to decide that. I think ours is deciding whether our Planning Commission made a, a good decision, that they were not arbitrary or capricious in it, that they did not abuse their, their, um, discretion. And I feel that they were not arbitrary or capricious, and they didn't, and they used good discretion, um, by looking at this. So from my standpoint, um, I, I feel like this is something we should be voting on and moving down the road to whatever happens next, um, and, and supporting our planning commission's denial of this, of this request.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Green is next.
Thank you. Um, I did want to note one thing, which is that the Planning Commission's decision is not, I mean, it is, but it is not restricted to the text of our zoning ordinance because it references the master plan. The master plan does come into the decision-making process. Um, and, and that is, that is something that can play into their discretion. Um, so I, I would agree. That is, that is specifically what I was thinking of, uh, when I said that it is not, uh, number three, a clear abuse of discretion. It's, it is unclear, uh, given a general lack of stated reasoning, whether or not it was an abuse of discretion, therefore it is unclear. Um, an erroneous interpretation of zoning ordinance or law. I don't, I don't see in a misinterpretation. I don't see uh, anything to, to definitively state that. Um, and I do not see any erroneous findings referenced or stated. So again, not that. Uh, as, as I noted originally, uh, I don't know, uh, I, I do not think it was capricious. I do not know whether it was arbitrary or not because we lack reasoning. Um, I, I'm more back to the middle. I will support uh, something. I just don't know which, but I will, uh, I, I could go either way. Either Mr. McCauley or Mr. Eisenbacher's view, kicking it back down for more detail, or the other way. I don't think it's going to come back to us in this same form. So I don't, I don't see this as requesting more detail for our decision-making process. I see it as requesting more detail for the public. If, if that would be the direction we'd go. Otherwise, uh, I agree with Mr. McCauley. This would be a situation where they, the Planning Commission has not clearly necessarily met one of those, um, criteria.
Thank you. Mr. Eisenbacher. You're muted somehow. There you go.
Okay. The thing I wanted to clarify, this is neighborhood node I. Right?
Beta.
It's neighborhood B. Okay. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Uh, another member of the board. Mr. Matsni.
I just want to make a couple of comments. Uh, what Mr. Eisenbacher proposed is a modification of setting aside the Planning Commission decision with directions to provide more detail. The ordinance, as well as the statute, does say this board can modify the Planning Commission decision, but it could only do so if it finds one of the four criteria. In other words, you can modify the decision, but you have to make a finding that the decision was arbitrary or capricious, that it was based on erroneous findings of material fact, that it constituted an abuse of discretion, or that it was based on an erroneous interpretation of the zoning ordinance. So even with a modification sending it back, you could only do that if the board agrees that one of those criteria were met. And they just, so any, any motion or resolution should include at least one of those criteria before uh, sending it back for a mo-, what was termed as a modification.
Mr. McCauley.
A question for Mr. Matsni. Um, is, is one of our options take no action on this also?
Well, taking no action would be tantamount to an affirm, affirming the decision. So, uh, so yes, that would be an option. Um,
Affirming this decision.
Because what, what the ordinance says is the CBA could modify or reverse the decision. So, so technically, yes, this board could take no action, which essentially would be affirming the decision of the Planning Commission.
Without, okay.
Language actually only says may. Sorry for speaking out of turn. So it's like, we don't even have to.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Um, I appreciate the comments that everyone is making. Um, I tend to agree with, uh, Mr. Boszhenbrook about the erroneous finding of fact. Because it's, it's, it's not a complete, um, based on what the petitioner said. We didn't, the city didn't give a clear reason for denial. When you're not clear about your reason for denial, I find that to be erroneous. Um, and they're speaking through the resolution. So their finding of fact is spoken in their resolution. So personally, I'm feeling, I'm finding that their resolution was erroneous because it did not express clear reasons for violations of the zoning ordinance as a means for, uh, denying the request. I don't have evidence of it being arbitrary or capricious. Um, they spent time. I can't climb into their mind to see if it was an abuse of discretion. Other than they did not clarify all the facts involved in their discretion with the, uh, resolution when they only gave two, two items that were not having clear links to, uh, to a, to a decision to not approve in terms of the language in our zoning ordinance. I don't think there's any erroneous interpretations by the planning, by the zoning, uh, Planning Commission of the zoning ordinance. So the one I'm seeing is number two. And again, I'll curious other thoughts, others' thoughts.
I just pulled up, um, synonyms for erroneous. Inaccurate, untrue, or false. I honestly don't see any of those in, uh, the Planning Commission's, um, decision. Uh, so, Mr. Eisenbacher, can you just take a step back again and just sum up not, item number two that you addressed at the very end? Just give us a one-sentence perspective you have on that. Or two.
Okay. In terms of, I mean, I don't want to just say that, yeah, the petitioner's right in his brief to us and that, um, they were just totally wrong because in taking in the Planning Commission's writings, petitioner's writings, the comments from staff, the comments from the public, the state, the, the resolution was incomplete in terms of providing a reason, a reason, clear reason from the zoning ordinance for rejection of the, of the, uh, site plan. I consider that to be erroneous based on the first word you said in that definition, and it jumped out of my head already. Glenn.
Hmm, uh, inaccurate, I think.
Inaccurate. Accuracy, you have to be complete to be accurate. You can't. In the past, when this, when this board has had a rejection of a major item, we spent quite a bit of time crafting the language of that rejection to make sure we were very accurate and we were, we communicated the full intent. Um, the one time we sent it back to the attorney's office and they spent a week crafting a rejection, crafting our rejection and we, with them, we even modified that rejection at that meeting through input of all my, of the, of all of us. And then we could stand behind it. It doesn't seem like the intent of the Planning Commission is clearly in that resolution rejecting the site plan approval. And that's where the error is in my mind.
Okay. And I just wanted to mention to all my colleagues on the board here that if somebody does want to, um, ask our legal advisor in the legal department of the city of Troy to craft a motion, we, um, that is permissible. We'd, um, I guess it's just, uh, it's an option. And then obviously we couldn't do that asking, uh, Mr. Matsi to do that here tonight. So that obviously would, uh, minimally postpone it till the next meeting. Um, and I'm not arguing that that's what we should do. I just, in my numerous conversations with city staff leading up to this meeting, um, that was brought up, uh, to me just as an FYI, just, I wanted to share that. I think Mr. Green had something.
Uh, so from, from my, with my, my degree in English, I have a bachelor's in English. Accuracy and precision are two different things. Now, they, they can be found to be synonymous, but there's a question there. Uh, accuracy denotes whether or not you are over the dot. Precision defines how tight in on that dot you are. Um, I do not know how erroneous functions in that regard as far as a legal term of art. And so I ask uh, Mr. Matsni, how, whether, whether we are on anything even resembling solid ground to consider inaccuracy, uh, a form of erroneousness in this regard.
You probably not gonna like my answer because it's going to be a lawyer-like answer, but because you're the board. Board that has to make the decision whether the, whether, uh, there was an, an erroneous decision.
Fair enough.
Let's, I'm gonna leave it to you guys.
Got it. Uh, well, so, so from that perspective, I can't, with my background, I can't support that. Um, uh, the, the one that was a bit fuzzy that, that Mr. Eisenbacher, he, I thought came close to but rejected, and, and please correct me if I'm putting words in, but was the clear abuse of discretion. And the reason that I can't support that is because it's not clear that it was abuse of discretion. It was, it, it, that, that is not supported by what we see. It could be, it might not be. I don't think it is. Uh, and everything else to me falls down, uh, the more I look at arbitrary and capricious. It's not arbitrary. They had tons of information. And it certainly, as this was noted, it wasn't capricious. So I, I'm actually at this point struggling to get behind kicking it back. That's where I'm at now.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. McCauley had something.
I thought Mr. Boszhenbrook was trying to say something but was muted.
Oh, what? We'll, we'll circle back to him in a second. Go ahead, Mr. McCauley.
I agree with, with Mr. Eisenbacher that when we come into, um, something, an item like this on our agenda, that when we, um, accepted it or rejected it, we were very clear and detailed in why we were supported it or rejected it. Um, I think that their response is incomplete in the sense that it doesn't give us clear direction on it. But I think that the two items that they did list on it, that, um, when I read it, the two items that I read that they, they said, lack of compatibility and inadequate transition. I mean, I, I see where they're coming from, from that. So even though it's an incomplete response, it's a response that tells us what they were thinking in a sense, but not as complete as we want. So if I look at those four things, I don't see one that I can hang my head on and say, yep, they were this, that they were arbitrary, capricious, abusive of that, or anything else. So I, that's what I meant.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chairman Boszhenbrook and Mr. Eisenbacher.
Okay, I'll try to be, I'll try to be concise. Um, so the lack of compatibility, um, I've split these two reasons. Um, I do think that that is, and I apologize, I have to scroll through this on my computer here. I do think that is a, um, erroneous interpretation of the zoning ordinance because I think that language in, uh, 8.06, as I read it in the plain language, does seem to refer to the context of commercial, uh, developments. Um, so I, I think that was just a misreading uh, of that portion of the, the zoning ordinance. I don't think that would apply to, to this situation. Um, and I guess as far as, um, and feel free to push back on me on this, but as far as, you know, arbitrary and capricious, I'll just touch on that for a second. Mr. Matsni's uh, memo gives us the Blacks Law Dictionary definition that it's a willful and unreasonable action taken without regard to law or facts. So I look at the reason of inadequate transition and I'm, I'm, I'm going back to 8.06 of the specific uh, issue, the specific criteria for transition that that section calls out. And I'm trying to figure out what facts the Planning Commission was relying on to, in, in reference to 8.06, to why that was inadequate. And also, under the neighborhood node language, why those, uh, factors are inadequate, which essentially is, in, in a sense, um, let me go back to the definition, is somewhat of taking action without regard to the facts. So I mean, we can quibble about it, but I, I could be persuaded that it was at some level arbitrary and capricious. But I also think Mr. Eisenbacher has a, a fair point too, that, um, there may be just, we're not clear what the material facts are, and there's an error there. Um, so that's kind of where I'm thinking. Um, that I, I'm, I'm just not sure what the, what the transition issue is because by nature, it seems like this sort of a project, um, issue is because by nature, it seems like this sort of a project is going to not be like the adjoining properties. The adjoining properties are a subdivision. This is not a subdivision and there's going to be some transition. And I'm just not clear as to why it's inadequate. We have information about setbacks being met. There's trees there, that are there. There was information about the aesthetic appearance of the buildings, the height, all seemed to, at some level, attempt to meet that transition criteria. So I'm not saying that they're, at the end of the day, wrong. I just don't know what exactly they didn't like about it that caused them to make that conclusion. So.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Mr. Eisenbacher next, please.
I like Mr. Motzni's answer for erroneous, for error, because I had a quick look in Black's Law, eighth edition, and error goes on for like five or six pages with different versions of it. But erroneous in Black's Law is very simple insofar as it's an adjective, incorrect, inconsistent with the law or the facts. If this were clean and simple, I don't think it would have ended up with us. But I still stand by the fact that the language that we received from the planning commission is not enough for us to understand their intent and to simply reverse it. So the question is, is do we make a resolution based on what Mr. Bosnbrook and was saying about his findings for the, the four criteria? The second half of it is, are we comfortable setting aside the decision or do we want to just send it back and say, modify your decision? This is where we get, we become judicial. And, and I'm trying to remember the, the word that judges use when they set aside a lower court's finding and they say redo it. But basically, that's what I'd like to do. It's just we have to dot our i's and cross our t's.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kenkri.
There was a reference earlier that compatibility refers to compatibility between commercial and residential, that, that is how it is stated in the zoning ordinance. But listening to the 93 residents, it kind of seems like in their minds, there is, there also has to be compatibility within residential and, and maybe that is not explicitly called out in the, in the zoning ordinance. Maybe that is left unsaid and, but that compatibility is still necessary within a residential area where you have single-family to high-rise. And I think it was reasonable if the planning commission recognized that and they used their judgment in relation to compatibility within the residential area and they found that it was not compatible. I don't think they went against anything that is in the zoning ordinance. They may have just addressed what is left unsaid in the, in the text of the zoning ordinance.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else who'd like to be recognized?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsoones.
Yeah. You know, I see no harmony. I could say that the comparability with the commercial, but there is no transition with the residential area. It's only such a development on Crook's role, who set a precedence for the future. And, and I agree with 95% of the residents of the area, the issues they brought up, like they would decrease the value of the properties. And, and it would be very uncomfortable for the residents with children and, and the well-being of the seniors and, and everything else in the area. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Another member, would someone like to be recognized for possible resolution? By the way, I just want to say, my favorite communication that was read tonight was from the lady who identified herself from Troy, as from Troy, Michigan, as if we, we needed to know what state she was. Troy, Michigan, not Troy, New York. Okay, thank you. Any, anyone wanting to take a stab at any resolution? I saw Mr. Eisenbacher's hand go up first. And we'll go to Mr. Green.
Okay. Here's my stab at a resolution. Resolved that the zoning board of appeals finds that the decision by the planning commission was arbitrary and capricious.
Sorry, hold on. Rusty, can you mute yourself? It's hard to hear.
And the zoning board of appeals modifies the planning commission resolution to set it aside and the ZBA sends this site plan back to the planning commission to provide a more thorough and detailed resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman Bosnbrook. Mr. Eisenbacher, can you just read the first sentence?
Resolved, resolved that the zoning board of appeals finds that the decision by the planning commission was arbitrary and capricious.
Thank you. Now we're open for discussion. From a member of the board.
Mr. McCauley.
No, the chairman determines who, who is.
Fair enough. Sorry, I, I was, I was attempting to have him recognized. I will very, very briefly speak. I, I cannot support that because I do not believe that this was arbitrary and capricious. I do not believe that this was erroneous. I do not believe that this clearly shows essentially incorrect factor or abusive of their authority or discretion. And I don't see the, the erroneousness of, of it in general in that regard.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McCauley.
He said it.
Okay. Mr. Eisenbacher, do you want to, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kenkri, please.
I concur with Mr. Green.
Another member.
What's that?
Is that a call to question?
Call to question.
Okay, there's no second required for calling the question and there's no debate. So if you vote yes, we proceed to voting on the resolution. If you vote no, discussion continues. Ms. Friends, we are prepared for a vote.
Mr. Desmond.
I'm calling the question. Go ahead, please.
Mr. Desmond.
He's not here.
I'm sorry. Mr. Kenkri.
You're muted. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're muted, Mr. Kenkri.
Andrew, muted.
Mr. Kenkri.
There you go.
Can you please explain what yes and the no means so I have a better understanding?
A yes vote at this point is, I'm calling the question. Calling the question means to end debates and then to proceed to a final vote on the resolution in this case. So if you vote yes, there's no more discussion. We're going to proceed right to a vote. If you vote no, then there can be more discussion.
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsoones?
No.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Bosnbrook?
Yes.
All right. At this point in time, we go right to the Eisenbacher resolution. So if you agree with Mr. Eisenbacher's resolution, and Mr., the Eisenbacher-Bosnbrook resolution, you'll be casting a yes vote. If you're opposed to that resolution, you're going to cast a no vote. Ms., Ms. Friends, we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
No.
Mr. Bosnbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsoones?
No.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
No.
Mr. Kenkri?
No.
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
We have four votes to, to pass anything, so we are, we're at the four vote. Mr. Eisenbacher, I think he had his hand up first, Mr. Eisenbacher.
I just want to say, I don't think we can let this item go without a resolution. I hope one of my colleagues can put forth a resolution and not let this item die without, without a decision from our board.
Thank you. Mr. Green.
I would like to propose a resolution. I would resolve that the zoning board of appeals accept, or what was the specific word? Sorry. That we affirm the, the decision of the planning commission as, as already made, as the, the criteria allowing us to reverse or modify it are not present. The decision was not arbitrary, capricious. We, we have evidence from their own mouths in this room that, that the petitioners were there while the board considered hours and hours of testimony on multiple occasions. The decision was based, was not based on an erroneous finding of fact. The, the transition is a little fluid, but it is legitimate as a consideration and there were other points brought up by the public where that can come into question and, and whether it fits into the area is a consideration as well. So I do not see that they, that they incorrectly found anything. I do not see any clear abuse of their discretion. They did not outright state that we're doing this, you know, out of fiat, which would be capriciousness again, but there is no clear intent to not provide information out of cussedness. And the decision was not based on an erroneous interpretation of the zoning ordinance or zoning law. I do not see that at all, the, the question of transition and, and comportment are legitimate considerations. And for that reason, I believe that we should affirm the planning commission.
Okay, Mr. Green, let me just clarify with you for just a moment, because this former parliamentary is a little confused. I understand what you, where you're going, but what I heard from your lips seemed to be, and maybe I'm wrong, seemed to be a resolution and discussion, your fellow colleagues support your resolution, all wrapped in one. Is that kind of correct? I think that's what happened. And what I would ask, because we, there's no second yet, you can alter your resolution in any way. I'm not saying you have to. I'm just saying, if I was advising you on parliamentary procedure, I, I would, I would argue that you should. But if, if that is your resolution, then I will speak under discussion if it's seconded.
First, I will speak to Ms. Friends. If you would like, I could type that, since that would have to go in the record. However, no, that, my intent was to provide those as supporting reasoning points within the resolution as you might find in a formal place. However, I am amenable to amending the resolution to simply state, the ZBA affirms the decision of the planning commission on this matter. So resolved.
I second that.
Okay, so is that Mr. McCauley seconded? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we have a proper second to the resolution. Ms. Friends, can you repeat the resolution back to us at this time? Is that possible? Mr. Evans, either or?
The short one.
Well, the short one. That is, the ZBA affirms the planning commission's decision.
Okay. Very good. Now we can have discussion. Only reason I brought that up is I think Mr. Green definitely went into discussion mode at a certain point and that clearly was, is not part of a resolution, especially when I heard the words, "transition is fluid." And so, which I think was his thought process, and that's why I knew it perhaps was not part of the resolution that he was proposing. Is there a member of the board who'd like to discuss this resolution? The Green-McCauley resolution? Vice Chairman Bosnbrook.
I, I know this is appropriate, but I guess I would also like to just call the, move to call the question, just because I think we've, unless someone else has a point of discussion, I think we've discussed this, besides Mr. Eisenbacher has his hand up, so maybe this is premature.
Well, calling the question is non-debatable, so you've already called the question. So I'm going to.
Okay.
Carry that through, just in, in the future, for any member, someone calls question, it's, it's kind of like the bomb being dropped, you know, we're, we're required to move forward on that motion, which is not required, does not require a second and there is no debate. So at this point, Ms. Friends is about to call the roll on the Bosnbrook call of the question, which would mean ending debates and we would proceed to the Green-McCauley resolution. So a yes vote says you, you want to end all debates and a no vote would simply bring it back to the board table for further discussion potentially. Not that we know, but I think Mr. Eisenbacher did want to say something, but that's just FYI. So, Ms. Friends, we're prepared for a vote.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Okay. Mr. Clark?
Uh, no.
Oops. I'm sorry. One second. Right. Mr. Green?
No.
No. Wait one second.
This, we're calling the question, correct?
Yes.
So this will give Mr. Eisenbacher a chance to speak if we vote it down.
There's no debate, Mr. Green.
Sorry.
Yes. Ms. Friends.
We're calling the question, correct?
Yes.
So this will give Mr. Eisenbacher a chance to speak if we vote it down.
There's no debate, Mr. Green.
Sorry.
Yes. Ms. Friends.
Mr. Clark?
I vote, I think I voted, you know? I vote no.
Okay. Mr. Bosnbrook?
I'll stay with yes.
Mr. Kenkri?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
No.
Mr. McCauley?
Ah.
Mr. Green?
Still no.
And Mr. Calzunas?
Yes.
Ms. Friends, what is your vote tabulation? Four yes and three no?
Three no.
Okay.
Four yes.
Very good. So the calling of the question prevails, so we go to the Green-McCauley motion, which was the resolution Mr. Green put forward some time ago, and there's no discussion on this at this time. Ms. Friends.
Mr. Bosnbrook?
No.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kenkri?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
No.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Calzunas?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
No.
Four yes, three no.
Motion prevails with four yes votes, so the resolution is agreed to. At this point in time, I'm just going to call on, if I can, Mr. Motzni, real quick. Do you have any, anything you want to add now as to where we're at?
No, nothing to add. It's a final vote, affirming the Planning Commission's denial of the site plan.
Very good. Okay, and at this point in time, we move right along to item number six, communications. Mr. Evans, are there any communications to discuss?
No.
Very good. Item number seven, miscellaneous business. Mr. Evans, I do have a question, because I know you and I talked about this before at length. Is there something on item number seven related to a future board training?
We're working on that.
Okay.
So yes, that's in the hop.
Okay, so perhaps in February, you'll have more information for the board on that, correct? Possibly?
Yeah, and I think the intent there is to have some training for the board done by the City Attorney's Office, and so we'll come up with a list of things that we think might be good. Mr. Chair, I'll involve you with that, and perhaps we can have the City Attorney's Office help staff create some training.
Very good. Any other miscellaneous business?
No.
Mr. Evans? No, very good. Public comment, at this point in time, the board will receive public comment on any matter related to the agenda that was presented tonight or any other matter. So I'll open up public comment at this time. If you'd like to be recognized, please indicate that. If not, I will close public comment out, and barring anything else, I believe we are adjourned until February. Have a good night, everyone.
Good.
Good.